Good evening. Welcome to tonight's study session of the Norman City Council. We have two items on tonight's agenda, and the first is the presentation of the Human Rights Commission Inclusive Community Subcommittee Recommendations. I appreciate you all coming out tonight. We look forward to hearing from you, but this is a study session which we don't always have public comment on, but because I have a feeling that people would like to share their thoughts on a variety of the wonderful recommendations coming from the subcommittee, we're going to save those for the end after all of the recommendations because there are more than one. So with that, I would like to invite one of the co-chairs of the Inclusive Community Subcommittee, Dan Dukes, to present on their summary and recommendations.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Clark. You'll have to excuse me, I didn't expect such a large crowd this evening, so we will get through this. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Dan Dukes, and I've been the, I am the Chairman of the Human Rights Commission. I've been on the commission for five years now, and I've been a Normanite for 20 years. Thank you for letting us present the ICS Summary and Recommendations. I would like to thank the mayor again for initiating this project, and my co-chair, Marjonne, for all her help. Let's start with a little background. Slide two, please. The HRC received and selected 41 members from our community September 2019. We based our selections on several criteria, including experience with the community service, diverse backgrounds, and length of time in our city. Once selected, our committee met four consecutive months for several hours with three additional working groups, giving us a total of seven meetings to identify and write suggestions. Let me clarify that these are suggestions and by no means required by city council to put into action. Next slide, please. We received a total of 288 responses, which we were very pleased with, and used the 2009 city report to help guide us through the process. We wanted to use our time wisely and make sure that we were not spending times on items that had already been addressed, so we carefully went through them to make sure that we were either following up on things that needed to be followed up on, or we were not duplicating. Next slide, please. After several discussions, we decided to put together eight working groups, kind of looking at topics that we needed. These working group topics were decided by the group in order to represent all of our citizens and the issues they may be dealing with. Of course, there will be overlapping issues, but we feel confident that this list reflects concerns facing our community and with results will make our city a more diverse and inclusive The recommendations were unanimously approved and presented in front of more than 300 residents at the, of Norman at the mayor's interfaith breakfast on January 20, and was met with These are the list of recommendations in no particular order. The first one was a formulation of an inclusive advisory committee. This will be a committee consisting of Norman residents with direct experience and knowledge, inclusion of an HRC, and possibly a city council member, we need to discuss that. It will help us foster a level of trust between the mayor, city council, and marginalized communities, include community leaders, and provide a direct entry point of communication between council and larger Norman community, leadership development for underrepresented and marginalized groups, eventual inclusion in city charge, in our city charter, and assist in recruitment of an equity inclusion officer, which we will talk about next.
Mr. Dukes, I have a question about the advisory committee.
Yes, ma'am.
Some, I've received some questions about why wouldn't the Human Rights Commission just take over these responsibilities, so I'd love to know why they wanted to separate it out into an advisory committee.
That was a possibility, but the fact that we have such a small number of people on the Human Rights Commission, we felt it was best to include a larger group of the community. So actually, we are thinking about inviting those that already participated in the subcommittee to be a part of that committee or look otherwise. It was merely a fact of numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this suggestion was to hire a city equity officer. Many other cities have done this. This person would be held responsible to research and develop a data-driven five-year inclusive plan of action. If you've noticed, we've put no timelines on any of these actions. Provide diversity, equity, inclusion training for city leaders. Collaborate with the HRC and the IAC, which will be the inclusive advisory committee. Support diversity training programs for business owners, we'll get to that further. Support creation of historically accurate exhibits in public spaces, and join the government alliance on race inequality. GARE is a very good program, and we would love the equity officer to be in charge of that program. Okay, this one was the number-one complaint of most residents in Norman, was actually navigating the website, trying to find things on the website, being informed of things that were going on. There seems to be a real discussion how people are receiving information, whether it's through a newspaper, website. We talked about possibly creating an app. It really was just about making sure everyone is getting the information. I do know that Facebook is very popular, but with the younger residents in Norman, it seems like Facebook is not as popular as it used to be, so it's more about the website. I don't think it would take that much, really, for us to reconstruct that.
Okay, Mr. Dukes, two things. This is a different format for study sessions, so y'all may need to yell at me, but Councilor Scanlon had a question about the previous slide, and I think city manager Darryl Pyle has a comment about the website.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Scanlon?
Really, a simple question. I'm all about, having lived in bureaucracy for years and years, I worried about change of command. We have this equity officer proposal. Where would he work? Who would he work for? What's his reporting chain?
That's a good question, and that's something that we discussed, because we know we have a city manager now, and after doing research, it seems best that the equity manager is a standalone position and does not work within a department, but I don't see why the city of Norman couldn't start that way, maybe have an interim person, or develop a position under the city manager.
So the answer is, your recommendation would be that he reports directly, he, she, they, report to, directly to the city manager. Is that correct?
My recommendation would be what, however the city could implement this person with the structure that we have now. Ideally, it would be nice for that person to have their own office and their own staff, but I know with budgets, it may not be feasible.
I'm going to pursue the staff, since you brought it up.
Yes, sir.
You envision a staff, then, for this individual? How big a staff? What would their responsibilities be?
I think it would be nice to have a representation of the community, so I would leave that to the equity officers' discretion of how large the staff would be, but I couldn't see more than one or two people.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And a quick update, Your Honor, on the redesign of the website. We anticipate first views in April, and some of the highlights for the new website, a much more mobile-friendly design, so we think that'll help a lot. We've also been in contact with a local app developer, and the price of a phone app these days is far more reasonable than I think anybody in the room would recognize. We did have some conversation at the staff level about what things could be better communicated through the use of an app, and of course, that's the type of thing that if you're interested in these types of, you know, press releases, news releases, or updates, you simply download the app and it comes right to your phone, and if you're not interested, you don't download it. So we will continue the conversation about the app, and it may have several functions. This could absolutely be one of those functions.
The next slide, please. This was also another issue that we had, being that some people cannot make the meetings due to either a language barrier or child support. I know it's a little hard to formulate an idea right at this moment, but it would be nice to have childcare available for those people that are dealing with that situation, and possibly having some literature possibly in another language, or have an ASL signer if needed. I'm sure the city is capable of producing that.
Currently, we have a cover sheet on our meeting agendas that says if you need some sort of additional services like this, notify us ahead of time and we can take care of it.
Terrific.
And with childcare support, I was very excited to see that. We've actually done that in the past. I don't know if you recall, we had childcare provided at the library when it was over here for a stormwater meeting, so we have a model in place. And I think one of the benefits of being a college town is there's a whole bunch of sororities and fraternities over there who are looking for service hours, and I bet that would be a really unique partnership to get them involved in local government as well. So that one, I'm very excited to see, because we've got lots of parents on council, and I know you've all seen my little ones around, and it's just, if we're dealing with it, then surely our residents are as well.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, sanctuary city. I'd like to read it to you how it is written, and then I'll give you a little backstory. So renegotiate the current laws so that county jails do not detain individuals for civil violations of federal immigration laws. Develop relationships with other sanctuary providers, i.e. churches, city services, and state nonprofits, and adopt a family-first policy to keep immigrant families intact. This was a large discussion that we had. There were a lot of varying opinions. I'll be honest with you, not all of us were educated on federal laws and how the city was dealing with detainees right now, but remember, it was in the spirit of being an inclusive community, and we wanted to offer suggestions to better serve our people of col, our residents of color, and including undocumented residents. With that in mind, this was one suggestion to the city council. We've also looked at the welcoming project, and we've also looked at certified cities, so there are other suggestions that we can make, but it was in the best interest of inclusivity.
No, I appreciate that clarification. I too have looked at the welcoming project, and our motto is building an inclusive community. I feel like this recommendation got a lot of attention thanks to some preemption bills that we are seeing from the state legislature, and if you all have been following my stance on preemption, regardless of the issue, I will always stand against preemption, because we, as a community, deserve the right to have the conversation, which is exactly what preemption takes away. But with that said, I think our city manager has additional information about this specific recommendation.
We have received similar recommendations and requests in the past, and for such requests, we tend to turn initially to our city charter, and then the balance of the municipal code to look for jurisdictional authority, and this is one of those instances where the largest part of the request does fall outside the jurisdictional authority of the city council, and we would not be taking action on that particular item unless otherwise directed.
Thank you. Councilor Scanlon?
I've gotten all kinds of emails and phone calls and so on on this subject, as I'm guessing most of us have. And people bring up the subject of sanctuary cities, and are you for it or against it, and my initial reaction was, you know, I don't know, because I don't know what you mean by sanctuary city. I know what I read about in the paper, and all the crisis in California and that kind of stuff, but if you're discussing sanctuary city, what do you mean by sanctuary city? Give me a definition of what you want to see.
Well, having done research, it looks like we are already a sanctuary city in the fact that the Norman police officers do not report undocumented immigration laws, correct? They go to the county jail, and they make the decision because they have federal contact with ICE. So I don't want to tell you something that I do not know, but it really was in the spirit of inclusivity. We wanted to go big and throw out something that we could talk and discuss, but we in no means wanted to break any federal laws or change any of our policing. We have a great police department now that does a great job, and I think that it's up for discussion.
But part of the problem is just that, that this means different things to different people, and it raises hackles because of that. And I think a definition is really, really important, whether it's sanctioning what the police department currently does, or somehow or other modifying procedures. We need more definition, more information, I think, before we can even think about any of these recommendations that you're making with regard to sanctuary cities, at least in my opinion.
Well, and that speaks to the fact that people getting kind of worked up about it was a little preemptive considering, considering that we hadn't even had a recommendation presentation yet, so that's why we're having this discussion tonight, so I appreciate everyone's thoughts. Councilor Bierman?
So I have a couple of questions, but first, I wanted to say, I think, I think that this would have been a really emotional and controversial topic regardless of preemption. I heard about this not in the spirit of preemption, but just because it brings out a lot of emotion in people on all sides. I've gotten dozens of emails about this. I have tried to respond to every single one. If I missed it, I am sorry. I have also engaged in dozens of conversations online, and I, I just want people to understand that this is just a listening opportunity for us, and it's important that we hear the Human Rights Commission out, but it's also important that we listen to all of the feedback from the public as well, regardless of how we, as individual council members, feel about it. And I just want people to know that I'm doing my due diligence. I've spoken with NPD, spoken with Cleveland County Sheriff's Department. I had a conference call with regional directors from ICE, and I spoke to an organization that deals in immigrant services to get their feedback on it. All had great thoughts and suggestions and feedback for me, and I've kind of consolidated that along with some of the comments from the public into a couple of questions, so just wanted to state that before I ask the questions. And my first question is, under our existing policies and practices, what did the Human Rights Commission feel wasn't working, or do you feel that people who report crimes currently risk deportation? I just wanted the, I just want to kind of get a sense of what the Human Rights Commission felt the problem was that a recommendation like this would solve.
Okay, so having conversations with the police department, we realized that there is a section of our community that do not report crimes in fear of deportation. So in the spirit of good policing, we were trying to figure out a process or a program that we would allow people to report crimes and know that they are safe. Them reporting crimes not only makes them, residents feel safer, but our communities as well, because we want to know the people that are committing crimes. So it was in the spirit of, we asked the police department, and they said there are many communities that will not report crimes in their neighborhoods.
And I think that that is definitely something that needs to be addressed, regardless of whether or not we move forward with a policy like this, so I appreciate that feedback. My next question is, what do you hope for in terms of policy outcomes from a position like this? It's kind of a different way of phrasing Councilmember Scanlon's question. It's not how, how do you define sanctuary city, but what are you looking for in terms of policy outcomes so that maybe it can be achieved in a number of ways?
Well, I think we would definitely be looking for the council's input on how we can follow laws that are already in place. We definitely do not want to reinvent the wheel or disrupt anything that is being done now. So I think maybe having a better partnership with either the county sheriff's department and the, and the police department of Norman to figure out where are the places that we could fill the void, or do a better job.
I appreciate that, and I did get the sense from my conversations with them that they are willing to have that conversation regardless of the outcome of this recommendation. And my last question is, should, let's say, we move forward with this kind of recommendation, what kind of services do you think Norman would need to adopt or bring to town that we don't already have in order to kind of comply with the spirit of a policy like this? Other than maybe an equity officer, what kind of services do you think that a policy recommendation like this would require?
I think there's a program, if somebody could help me with the name of it, Unidos, or, Unitos, which is a program now that not many people are aware of. So I think we need better emergency services and bilingual-speaking police officers and service community workers to just reach out to those communities. And remember, it's a very small community here in Norman, so we're just trying to address every resident, no matter how small their community, but definitely that would be a step in the right direction.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilwoman Holman.
Just have a couple of questions for Chief Foster, if possible.
Chief Foster, can you join us?
I think he's coming right around the corner.
Oh, there he is.
Thank you, Chief. Would you just kind of maybe briefly go over what current, and it's been mentioned, what, how Norman Police Department currently handles this type of issue with, pull somebody over for speeding? Does the Norman Police Department check to see if they are illegal resident of the United States?
No, we don't. We don't ask those questions. The way it may get into, us getting into that is if it is an investigation, and it's criminal in nature, and we have reason to believe that the person is from another country. We are required to contact their consulate, so in that case, we may ask them something about that, so we can contact their consulate.
That be normal and just a regular traffic stop?
No.
You're getting a ticket for?
Regular traffic stop, be a regular traffic stop if they, you know, and if they didn't have a driver's license, it would be the same like anybody driving without a driver's license. We would probably bring them in to post a bond. They would come and post their bond, and we'd let them go on a cash bond, just like anybody else.
In that situation, are they taken to the county jail if you don't have, if you're driving?
No, unless they can't post the bond.
Then you would be, okay. And if someone calls the Norman Police Department to report a crime, would their immigration status or residency status come up at any point?
No.
Probably not, okay. Okay, I appreciate that, Chief. I think, from what I understand, it's the federal government's job to enforce immigration policy like that, and if someone is arrested for a criminal offense, like you mentioned, and processed through the county jail, then that's when that type of issue may come up, but I think as, as mentioned here, this is really kind of beyond the city's authority or ability to do much about, I think, and I think the Norman Police Department, as I said, is a place where I think people can feel safe to, to report crimes that have happened in our community, and that they shouldn't feel at risk of being, having their status run through just for a minor traffic violation or something like?
Or reporting a crime, being a victim of a crime. We've had that recently happen. We don't want them to have any reservations about contacting us, thinking that we're going to ask their immigration status or anything like that. The way that would happen is, like you were saying, is if they have committed a criminal act and we take them to county, then people may be notified there.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate those answers.
Chief, real quick follow-up on that. I know personally that the police department has organized events that have attempted to reach out to the Hispanic community. Are we going to continue to do that? Because I know that regardless of whether or not you check when people report, if we don't have a good relationship, they're still not going to report.
Yes, definitely, and when we reached out to different churches that are large Hispanic populations, and we went to events at these churches.
Hispanic Heritage Month, I saw you and the fire department.
They were scared, some of the people there were scared that we were there, but I think they got more comfortable over time, and the more they see us, the more comfortable they become talking to us or reporting crimes that may be occurring.
Well, even on National Night Out, we went to that church as well where the festival was held, and, and I know that- was held, and I know that it's baby steps. It really is with this community, and I appreciate your efforts. And I know, and I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm sure we would all appreciate continued, if not increased, efforts in building those relationships.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Wilson?
I've probably got more calls on this topic than any call, any topic in the three years that I've served on council, so. But one of the things that I kind of sussed out, I tried to ask everybody what their concerns were and what, you know, kinds of things we can actually do that we do have control over. And one of them, this is more of a direction for the city manager, but one of them that came up was that sometimes people are in our community to work, and if they're undocumented, they're being abused and not being paid a fair wage. This creates an unlevel playing field for the licensed contractors and an abusive situation for the person that's working in the unlicensed capacity. Let's put delicately. So I think of all of the things I heard, that's actually something we probably can work through in our community, and so I just want to put that on your plate. The other thing that I just heard you say was the bilingual support. I think that's important, no matter if somebody's documented or undocumented. I think that's something we could probably work on as a community to make sure that we, and I know we do, but that's something I would support. So that was my thoughts on it. Oh, I have one more question. What is the number, Chief Foster, or whoever might know? I'll let you get all the way out there. I'm curious, how many, I'm saying it real slow so you can get in here and hear me. How many immigration-type deportations do we deal with as a city?
We don't deal with any.
We don't do with any, but I guess my question is, there's got to be some that are happening in our community, but that would be Cleveland County's job to do that?
Cleveland County may report, and if I'm remembering right through discussing with that, it's like a half a percent of what they deal with up there. I mean, it is not a great number.
And what is their number, so I can get an idea in my head? I don't know.
They probably process 10,000 prisoners a year.
So half a percent of 10,000?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody do the math for me. It doesn't seem like a lot. I mean, the thing I've kind of pushed on is I feel like as a community, we do not have the kind of jobs that attract, you can, that was it, that attract a large immigrant community. So I just, I don't feel like we have some sort of problem we need to solve. So that, and I'm done now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Scott?
I don't know who the question would be for, but it is regarding the census and reporting those numbers to the census, because as we know, it comes around every 10 years, and we get more funding the more people that we have. And so I think that probably undocumented immigrants, and I think we should make a distinction, by the way, very quickly, between illegal and undocumented. It is not illegal to exist. It is people who are living here who are undocumented. They are still residents of our city, and we have an obligation to provide safe quarters for them. And so my question again is regarding the census and making sure that the people who are reported or reporting on the census, making sure that they are safe, so that we are not underreporting, because oftentimes in the communities where undocumented immigrants are living, they are marginalized and more at risk. So they receive, or they should be receiving more funding oftentimes. So that's my question. Are they safe to be reporting their status in our city or in general?
They are very safe as it relates to census reporting. And in our census outreach efforts, we looked at several communities that are historically undercounted, and undocumented citizens are one of those categories. And we do recognize that regardless of your immigration status, you're driving on city streets, and we get the money to help maintain those city streets, partially based on that census data. So staff is very much aware of the importance of making sure every one of our communities that's just not easily accessible is counted. And from the efforts, there was a push that there would be a question on the census to ask about immigration status that does not appear on any of the census forms that we'll be filling out, and, you know, with friends and some relationships through the university to help us find and better count all of our populations. They are one, and they are safe.
Excellent.
Can I add something to that? We mentioned a church that does a lot of Hispanic outreach in the community. Reverend Oriana is on the census committee. So I was very excited to see his addition, because that should really help with that population.
I'm grateful to hear that. And as we know, not all immigrants are, you know, Hispanic or people of color. They are, you know, from places all over the world. But a lot of this issue, I think, has a lot to do with, it's rooted in racism and classism, and that's part of the reason that we've seen such an outcry against it. And I think that we should go ahead and just acknowledge that while we're here. So I just wanted to ask that question, make sure that our residents, whether they are citizens or not, are safe to report so that our city can receive funding since they are driving on our streets and using our utilities, and we are serving them just like we serve all of our citizens and residents in the city of Norman.
And Your Honor, I just received confirmation that the Census Bureau does not share any information with other agencies, so.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
The 2010 census shows that population, undocumented citizens here.
Thank you.
Shall I move on? I was told about the clicker. Okay, so the next one is the Sundown Apology and Reconciliation Proclamation. I was here the evening that Dr. Henderson received that. It was a very moving speech. Really appreciated that he received that. Dedication to public individuals who fought and struggled to human rights, creation of historically accurate museum exhibits and public markers in public facilities and parks. That's something that we can discuss when we get to another suggestion. And reaffirm the commitment to inclusivity and justice for all residents. And like I said, Dr. Henderson received that. Thank you.
And if I may have a moment of privilege, I'd like to recognize Dr. Michael Givel, who was instrumental in doing the research and formulating that proclamation. Thank you very much for your efforts on that.
Fully accessible transportation. I know that's a topic right now because of our, can I call it a broken relationship we had with OU and that bus system? But we really need to improve upon the number of location stops and the hours of operation, and I believe the distance where buses will travel. I think with OU being our majority of population, we all assumed that students were jumping on buses, but that's not true. We have families, and we have people who are not able to have their own transportation needing buses. It would also include increasing sidewalks and maintenance of existing sidewalks and curb cuts, and seek support from grant writers to provide necessary additional revenue for better transportation services. I did speak with the police department, and they said that we are using OU's bay right now, I guess, for, but we at some point are going to have to figure out getting our own, right?
We're working on it.
Okay. But the truth is, you know, if people can't get to these prides and festivals and events, it's pointless. Build relationships with Utes. Do you all know that joke? Anyway.
Councilmember Vinnie.
Sorry. Actually, on a personal note, the school resource officers, I'm part of the Citizen Police Academy, and we just spoke about this last night. They have a very impressive program, the Norman Police Department does, with having school resource officers in middle and elementary schools. They are working on funding to get some more permanent-type people and to build that staff. We'd also like to partner more with the police, fire, and other agencies to promote after-school programs, keeping kids at risk, whether they are already at risk or heading down that road into some good programs. Strengthen the Norman Youth Council, ensuring criteria for participation for all students. We're finding that there are some subsect of students that are not getting the program availability, whether it's a transportation problem, or a classism, or a neighborhood problem. But we want to make sure we're reaching all students, so they all can be benefited from any kind of programs. Expand support within the police department. That is the program I was talking about. It's a crisis support program needed for bilingual communities. Increase advocacy for victims of human trafficking. You know, that is a huge problem in Oklahoma. We're still fighting that. And domestic abuse. We've also talked with the police department about broadening their concepts of domestic abuse. That is not always a husband-and-wife situation. It can be same-sex partners. It can be non-married people. It can be in communities that don't report. And we want to make sure that every resident has equitable access to emergency services. And we're glad to hear that the police department does not ask for documentation, but we still are getting reports of people not reporting their crimes. Childcare, this was a big one as well. We really do need to get some high-quality, affordable, accessible childcare, after-hours availability. We do have some here in Norman, but as everyone is well aware, prices are very high for good programs. We'd like to partner maybe with some nonprofits and religious organizations to maybe keep the prices down and increase the options of availability, and then providing some grants to possibly subsidize those costs. And we had an idea of supporting a community parent co-op. That would be something that maybe the inclusive subcommittee could work on, but that was an idea that we had, is a parent co-op. Homelessness services. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Beerman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was trying not to wave too much. Can you, as a parent of a two-year-old, I pay more in childcare than I pay in car payments. So I understand this issue. Can you tell me a little bit what a community parent co-op is? Oh, trick question.
I would believe it would be probably structured like a nonprofit organization where we would get some training and, you know, certification of providers. But I think we had a vision of maybe rotating providers, so parents that are available to watch one night could participate, and other parents that are free another night could participate. And we could get, like you said, possibly OU students involved, and just reaching more out into the community instead of having just privately-owned businesses offering services.
I really like that idea, and I would also, I would also encourage maybe some emphasis on, I don't know if it's bilinguality or whatever, because my child actually goes to a bilingual daycare, and it has been the best thing that has ever happened to her. She can now be defiant in two languages. So I think that that might be a way to kind of wrap a couple of these recommendations together to kind of have a multiplier effect in the outcome. But I really, I really like this slide. It's one of my favorites so far.
Homelessness in Norman is what I call an out-of-sight, out-of-mind problem. What we really want to do is talk about making it more visible in a sense that we are aware of what is needed. Like I said, having a close relationship with the police department, I've spoken to them, and they've told me that there are many camps here in Norman, just tucked away out of sight, and lots of people are living there. So we really want to create community awareness and make sure those people are counted. Like you said, they are residents here, and make sure that we have facilities available to meet their needs in all parts of Norman, not just the east side, possibly the west side. So we are looking maybe through volunteer or already communities that are reaching out for us to partner with them and see what else needs to be done to help with homelessness.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Homelessness is something that I pay a lot of attention to.
Yes, sir.
I'm on the council's ad hoc committee that follows this kind of stuff. I've been very involved. I read in the preface to your report that you had trouble getting information about homeless programs, and I'm a little bit confused, because the people that I talked to in codes enforcement in the police department say, tell me, and they've given me evidence, that they provided the committee vast amounts of data. So I don't know what you meant by that prefacing remark. That's an editorial comment from me.
Well, if I can touch on that real quickly, I wasn't part of that committee, but I can tell you that it really just came down to the part of the year, sir. It was during the holidays, and I think some of the problems were just strictly meeting with the people that we needed to meet with. So it wasn't a complaint per se, sir. It was just about, we wish we could have reached out and...
It comes across that way, because in fact, one of the members of the city staff that worked this provided reams of email information to your committee. I've seen the emails. I didn't mean to pick an argument.
Oh, no.
I'm confused by this. I like the idea that you want to help to increase funding, that's a big deal for us, explore avenues, any kind of information, any kind of recommendation, specific recommendation you have, I think is very important. I want to encourage that. I just felt a little bit frustrated when I read that information, and I had to ask the question.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that feedback. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Please continue.
Accessible housing, this was a big discussion as well. It looks like affordable housing for residents of Norman is becoming more difficult, because we are really targeted towards OU students. They're really dictating our rental rates and squeezing out a lot of availability for single tenants. We were looking at, really trying to be innovative and thinking about how we could either incentives, incentives, yes, rental owners now into giving preference, and I know that's going to cause a whole bunch of problems when I said that, but trying to figure out a way of letting Norman residents live in affordable housing. You know, the average price of a one-bedroom home in Norman is between $600 and $800 a month, and if somebody is making $8 an hour, that is 60% of their monthly income. It is very difficult. So we really are open to ideas on how we could do this. We talked about possible rent control. You can see there's a lot of suggestions up there, but I think that is a problem that we need to address.
Councilmember Beerman?
So we've had a couple discussions in our committees about affordable housing, just trying to get a handle on kind of what the extent of the issue is and what other communities have done to address those concerns. There are some good best practices out there. We haven't really been able to consolidate that into any kind of policy initiative, but we have started to do some work on accessibility. I encourage you to kind of keep an eye on, as it moves through the process, we have a visitability ordinance. I got schooled in ADA in our work on an ad hoc committee about this. We're not calling it an accessible housing ordinance, because it's not fully accessible, but it's a step in the right direction. It would be an incentive program, hopefully with a construction use tax rebate to help build the bones of homes to be more accessible. Wider doorways, turning radiuses, kind of getting the structure of the home in a place where it can become more accessible, maybe as someone ages or experiences a temporary disabling event, which a large percentage of people do. So I'd love to connect with you about where we are in that process and the draft that we've come up with, to kind of see if it fits within what you were looking at in terms of availability and affordability of accessible homes. It's not quite all the way there, but it's a step in the right direction, and it's a program that has worked pretty well in a few other cities, and so we're looking at incorporating it here.
We also found some interesting information about ADA accessibility, in that we have so many historical buildings here in Norman, they fall under a grandfather clause of not needing to be ADA accessible once they are built. And we also found that a two-story building does not require ADA accessibility, but a three-story does. Now, think about that logic for a second. I mean, if you can't get to the second floor, so that really pushes out a lot of people looking for jobs, or anybody that has been injured, or anybody with a disability that can't. So we need to look at that as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. City manager?
Just a comment on a mechanism that's brand-new and conversation in the state of Oklahoma. Just a comment on a mechanism that's brand-new and conversation in the state of Oklahoma. And it could provide a mechanism for funding that would allow property owners to retrofit existing buildings for ADA accessibility. And the initial program is called C-PACE, which is an energy efficiency or energy production financing mechanism for commercial property owners to gain 100% financing for energy improvements to their property. That bill was signed into law very recently. There's already an amendment to the C-PACE financing bill, and the bill number escapes me, to expand that opportunity to residential property. And I'll be emailing our representatives a request to further expand that financing mechanism to provide for ADA accessibility. And it's a pretty simple machine, and the language would be simple. So it's something we'll be working on, just to make it easier for property owners to make their properties more accessible.
That's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
I have just a couple of comments slash question. Accessible housing versus affordable housing? There's been talks of affordable housing being, you know, 30% of anyone's income. Is there a difference, sir? Are we talking about the same thing?
No, they're definitely different issues.
Okay. So this is about accessible housing, which may go back to CM Beerman's point about visitability, which is like aging in place and things of that nature. I'm wondering if we're also, because you also mentioned rent control. Would that only be then for a certain community? Does this make sense, what I'm asking?
No, I would never suggest that we had pockets of rent control, but I think that may be an incentive for some property owners to rent to non-OU students.
Okay. I understand.
And that somebody could come in in a three-year lease and know that they're safe at that rent, and it's not going to be raised.
Okay. I dig it. I like the idea. And I was just kind of wondering about, we also just briefly discussed homelessness, and I don't know if you guys have, or if we have any data on how many apartments are unoccupied. I understand there have been issues in the past. You know, we have a lot of apartment buildings going up, Airbnbs, rental properties, and the integrity of our neighborhoods isn't quite the same. And so I'm wondering if we have any sort of statistics on how many apartment complexes are unoccupied at this time?
I don't think we have any data on that, but I do know we have some very aggressive builders here in Norman who are doing great jobs. And when buildings become vacant, they're being bought pretty quickly and turned into maybe a higher-rent property.
So as far as higher rent, with one of our problems being, for example, in Norman, we have one of the higher poverty rates in the state.
Yes.
17%, and many of those people living in poverty are between the ages of 18 and 35. So many of them may be students, many of them may not be students. However, this is the problem. And so if we have all of these unoccupied apartments, I don't know if there's some sort of nonprofit or governmental organization that, or public-private partnership we can strike, where we say, hey, these people are struggling, they're low-income, they are homeless, they need a place to stay. If we have the ability to house these people and give them work, whether it's on-premises and help them get their lives back on track, you know, give them food and shelter that they are paying for through their own work and service and labor. That's something that I thought about, because I do, when I was running for office almost two years ago, or two years ago, this was an issue with apartment complexes going, being very unoccupied or being vacant. And then we also have, you know, a homelessness issue here in Norman. And so to me, it feels like we are able to house people, and that's not happening. So those are some thoughts that I have. And then thank you for answering the question about accessibility versus affordability.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilwoman Scanlon?
A couple of things. One, with regard to lists of available housing. Our homeless lady, Michelle Evans, does track that. She does have a list. She's the project person in charge. But because one of the things that she does as a part of her job is to try to find temporary or permanent housing for the homeless, she does seek that information. So there is some level of information available. I can't tell you that it's 100% accurate with every apartment in town known, but we do have an idea of where places are. Now, getting homeless into those facilities is something else again, because the owners, the landlords, do have some restrictions. It may be no pet. It may be something else. But it's a dynamic thing, an ongoing thing, and Michelle does keep track of that. I've seen the briefing slides on the program that the city manager mentioned, and I'm encouraged that we may help to solve two problems with that. One, the availability of some reasonably-priced housing, but also it has a component relating to renewable energy, which is something that we, the council, have said we really want to have. So that's a big deal. The other question that I have, and it's just clarification for me. You mentioned rent controls. I have to ask our city attorney the legality of same. How would such a thing be implemented, if it even could?
I know of rent control setups in other states. I don't know of any in Oklahoma, so I think this would probably be an issue of first impression in Oklahoma. And it's something we'd have to look into deeper. We haven't looked into that too deeply yet. Obviously, looking at other states as a model for how they started those kind of programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilwoman Hall?
I just wanted to go back and address the accessibility, accessible housing versus affordability and affordable housing. And those two things clearly, you know, do go together, even though they can be two different things. But one of the things that I was really interested in understanding more about the need for affordable housing in Norman is great, as you have also discovered, and that currently we really have a need for about 9,000 units of affordable housing. And I'm looking at Ms. Craig to make sure I'm saying that correctly. Yes. Okay. So this is, you know, definitely something that we want to stay focused on.
Thank you, councilmember. Please continue. Quick one. Councilwoman Holman?
I just want to follow up on that, too. I would say I found it pretty difficult. And I think many other cities throughout the country are struggling with this affordability verse some sort of minimal standard of living. So a lot of affordable, cheap housing in most cities tends to be substandard. Electrical, plumbing, not accessible for people with disabilities, things like that. They tend to be older properties, and there's a place for those, but those can be kind of dangerous in a lot of instances. And I think where cities have really struggled is how do we require a certain level standard of these properties without the rent going, becoming unaffordable due to the improvements that we require? So I've seen some very, very cheap housing in Norman before that was, you know, questionably dangerous for the people living there. Or one small thing, and, you know, the whole house could be on fire type of situation. So I think that's something I've just, I've witnessed cities all over the country struggle to come up with an answer for. And same thing here, when we've talked about how to increase affordable housing in the center-city area, for example. And it generally comes back to, if we can't offer some sort of incentive to get a developer to include it, then they generally won't, just from a bottom-line standpoint. So how do we preserve existing affordable housing that isn't substandard and mold and bad electrical? How can we get new construction to include affordable housing, knowing that we don't have the resources as a city to offer massive and real, like, dollar incentive to a builder to include that? So maybe we could. That is something we think we need to explore. That's something we didn't really include in the center-city TIF, because it's really just infrastructure, and we didn't know how we could incentivize one property to include affordable housing. But I think that is on our center-city committee's list of things to revisit, actually. So I really do appreciate this conversation, because it's one that I've really struggled with over the years.
Well, if I could add something else, the other item in the mix is OU housing. So currently, OU requires freshmen to, only freshmen to live on campus. They're currently trying to push for freshmen and sophomore, which would keep the pool of students out of Norman looking for housing. The other issue is when the housing is so high on OU property, when it's $1,200 a room, you can charge $900 for a one-bedroom, and the students think it's a break. But the person making $750 an hour, that's out of reach. So we are dealing with that as well, and that's not something we can control. But, you know, every year, we brag of more and more students coming. So I think we're up to 30,000 students this year. That's going to be a ripple effect.
Well, I think it's real concerning, too, about the requirements for students to live on campus. I think it's great for students to live on campus. That's less driving that they've got to do. But the very high cost of living in new student housing that the university has constructed makes it very difficult for a lot of kids to maybe go to college, here anyway. And it's already expensive. There's already, you know, massive student debt, student loan debt in the United States. And I think students are looking for, yeah, cheaper places around that aren't on campus. But as you mentioned, 900 bucks, that's very expensive for any average Norman resident, I think, for an apartment or a bedroom especially. I mean, you could get a two-bedroom apartment, a three-bedroom apartment, maybe for that much. But when you're looking at $1,200 to $1,500 a month for a bedroom on campus, that is significant. So I think we have to keep in mind, a lot of students don't have wealthy families that can pay all their stuff. There are a lot of students at OU that are, you know, just scraping by with what they can get, so... Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, councilmember. Please continue.
Reevaluate the city RFP bidding process. Basically, we were discussing how we are looking at minority-owned businesses on projects. So we were, to be honest with you, not very well-informed on this process. But we would like to create a minority-owned business conference, possibly, or an online registry to connect those community members together. We do have some very strong communities already that own businesses, but we're just not really sure with the bidding process, are minority-owned or family-owned businesses given the same opportunities to bid in a fair way? This next one, a collaboration with the OU International Student Organizations. This one, I think, has a lot of possibility. It seems that we do connect with OU, but it's in a random way. We really love to see a point person that would make these relationships. That could possibly be the equity officer, or one of the duties that falls under that person. And these students, they're all about street fairs and music festivals. They love that kind of stuff. And they're always looking for work to be done. So I think just reaching out to them, you know, I think there's 700 student organizations at OU that would love to be part of our community. It's just about building that relationship and being consistent with that relationship.
Being someone who works at the University of Oklahoma, I can speak firsthand to like this invisible wall around campus, where the students don't really go past campus corner, maybe Main Street. But then also vice versa, while all of these amazing festivals are open to the Norman community, a lot of people don't either realize that or feel comfortable going on. But they had for Indigenous Peoples' Day recently, a powwow on campus. And a friend of mine has adopted a native child. And to see the pure joy on that child's face, see people who look like her. She pointed out her tribe's flag. We did the friendship dance together. It was really, really special. And so if we could replicate that with all of the international communities in our city, that would be really, really special. And this is a great example of the asset to having the flagship university in your city.
Thank you. And then the final one is expand current park space. So I don't know if you all know about the Gathering Place in Tulsa. It's a pretty phenomenal area. Really just updating some existing sites, expand and update Reeves Park, rename public spaces connected to land run to include signature outlining of the history of the land theft, occupation, genocide, and broken treaties related to sovereign nations. Also, in a positive light, parks and public spaces rank very high on residents' lists of activities they like to do here in Norman and concerns. They are free spaces for families and friends to gather, so that's always good. It's very equitable. But they would really like to see a little bit more safety, perhaps better lighting, better maintained equipment, more amenities. I think we talked about Wi-Fi service and just a general upkeep of our parks and public spaces.
All right. Councilmember Scott?
I'm going to hold my comments for now.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else to add?
I really appreciate the time you've given us all to present these. We look forward to your recommendations, and we look forward to working with all of you to make a majority of these suggestions come to fruition.
Well, I want to thank you. You and the co-chairs, Christina Bell, who was the staff lead on this, Tamara LeBach, who is not here tonight, but was the facilitator for this process, and every member of that committee for dedicating your time and resources to providing this list. I can't promise you that we can get everything done right away, but this is a wonderful roadmap of how we can continue to build an inclusive community. And we've already done one of the things, and I know that this council is excited to move forward on it. Thank you for your time. I don't pretend to know the answers to how we improve our community, and having that community input is vital. And I look forward to working with you and Marjonne on how we take the next steps to making sure that there's some sort of advisory committee going forward, so this doesn't get pushed to the wayside as we continue to wrestle with the laundry list of issues facing Norman today. So I would like to thank you all for your service on that committee.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. With that, we had 15 recommendations, and I think we would all appreciate hearing public comment. So if you have some, come to the front, and please state your name and where you live.
Do I need to push a button? Okay. Jeff Yamad, I was one of the members of the committee, and I wanted to address your question, Councilmember Scanlon, about the equity officer, because it seems like something big to jump in to hire somebody. And I don't think that's the intent immediately. For a city of our size, I spoke with the equity officer in the city of San Antonio, which is about 10 times the size of Norman. And they have an office with a director and several sub-directors and like eight staff. It's just a big office. A staff of one would be a big step here. But on their, on the recommendations, there was something called the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which is an organization of essentially anyone who's interested in having inclusive policies and equity policies in their communities. It's generally the equity officers of different cities throughout the country. And it's a space for best practices to be discussed. It's not a very expensive membership, and it would just be the getting someone to go... The best, I talked to the Government Alliance on Race and Equity as well, and their suggestion was you just get someone to go there and go to one of their conferences. They have a three-day or four-day conference every year, where you would just have someone available to go and talk to cities of a like size of Norman, perhaps with a like population. There's several in the southwest, Kansas City, Austin. Dallas is a member. And you could really figure out what fits for Norman. And I think that's the best way to go, really not try to dive in to something you don't know about, but really step into it, assign someone to go down there. It should be ideally somebody from the city manager's office, because that's where the natural report for that position would be, and figure out how to step into it. And really, when you're talking about inclusion and equity in an organization, whether it's a corporation, or a city government, or a school board, it's all about policy and procedure. And how do you build those policies into your organization? And it has to, and that and education, because I think all of us grew up in our own culture. We understand what our culture, what our families are about. But then we meet people from other cultures and other families that have different backgrounds and different expectations. And a lot of it is just training to figure out how we recognize that and how we deal with it. So does that answer your question, Malina?
I think it does. I really wasn't objecting to the concept. My question was bureaucratic. My experience in the military is whenever you have an agent such as that, it's usually... it's usually appended at a command level to avoid the kinds of things, getting lost in the staff, that kind of thing. So my natural inclination would be that it reports, that person reports to the city manager. I also take your point that, and frankly, we have a difficulty hiring right now. We can get into that in another time, but we need not wait for that in the sense that we could identify someone to begin to participate in these get-togethers and learn from that as a step towards this, a more fully-staffed proposition.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Steve Bell, six thirty-three Reed Avenue. I was very glad to hear the discussion of the current Norman police policy on cooperation with ICE. And if you've had a look at it, you can see that Norman police don't report civil violations to the immigration law, to the federal government. But they potentially would report criminal violations, which I know is sort of a, on the way to sort of a sanctuary city point. One thing that I do think it's important for people to realize, however, is that that is not, at least as for Norman, a policy of the city, that's a policy that's adopted solely by the chief of police. And the chief of police changes that policy at will, essentially. I mean, there have been many different manifestations of the sort of police manual, essentially. And arguably, and I think this is probably right, and I think this is actually probably right for the purposes of state law as well, the city council does have the purview to sort of look at the city policy or the police department policy and make decisions about what ought to be in it. And in general, we've refused to do that. So if you remember, in December seventeenth, there was a real, or December of twenty seventeen, there was a very controversial city council meeting about whether or not the city council should pass any kind of ordinance that basically ratified the police policy on cameras. And the council passed on that opportunity. So right now, pretty much everything from body cameras to, you know, potential cooperation with ICE is really just in the hands of the chief of police rather than the city council at all. So that, you might want to look into whether or not the city council should take control of the policy of the police department that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Beverly Todd, and we live on the east side of town. And my comment is basically for the human rights gentleman, that when they're looking at ways to help and really help the homeless, you need to also stop and think about the people in the community that the presence of the homeless is impacting, where they come onto private property. And we have been told that the police cannot always just come along and tell them to leave and make them leave unless you have signs up or something like that, or unless you're directly threatened. And we have come, we live in an area, we're out past southeast twenty-fourth. And a gentleman out there has a drone. And he has seen on our property and his property where people are living. And we know some people who have been homeless, and there are a lot of places where they can get help. But those places need to also be monitored, because there's a lot of drug activity and things that go on that the citizens are gonna pay the price.
No, I appreciate that comment. Lisa Craig, would you be willing to chat with her afterwards about some resources and options that she may have? Thank you very much for sharing that. Any other public comment?
Jane Crumpley, four twenty-three Elm. Mine had to do with some of the cost issues. What was paid, the consultant paid for her work, the contract?
Fifteen thousand.
And another question was, what kind of salary range are we thinking about if we hire an equity?
I appreciate everyone's detailed answers, but these are very preliminary recommendations. This is the first time we've seen a presentation on it, there has been no job description written, there's no salary recommendation. I'm sure that if we get to a place where we can create this position, we will do our due diligence to make sure that it's a competitive position like we do with all of our hiring in the city of Norman. But we just don't have that information at this time. And given the hiring freezes, I don't think that's gonna be on the radar in the near future.
And I want to appreciate Councilmember Scanlon's questions about where would this person be, under what department, and all of that? Because those were my questions of where this individual would be. And my last comment has to do with the survey. I didn't know about the survey. I like to think I'm fairly involved with the city, I just spoke to a couple of other people who are here a lot. They weren't aware of the survey either, so my bad perhaps, but...
No, I know that I shared it, I think several other councilmembers did, but it's hard to reach everyone, that's for sure. And I appreciate you staying on top of city issues. We will continue, as one of the recommendations, to do better with our outreach, and we will, we look forward to doing that.
My name is Walt Cavelda, I live in the basically northeast part of town. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'll give it a shot. I'd like to talk about the sanctuary city status. Our country has got a severe problem with uncontrolled immigration. I see no reason to roll out a welcome mat. Sanctuary cities not only protect the nice guy, they also harbor the criminal element as well. They do take jobs. A lot of people like to say, well, they just take jobs that so-and-so doesn't want to do. Well, twenty-some years ago, I owned an equipment business, and one of my customers came to me one day and says, Walt, I'm gonna be put out of business. And I said, how come? He said, and this is his words, not mine, he said, the Mexicans are underbidding me. They all live in one house, and I'm not gonna be able to run my business anymore. This was a guy that was accustomed to making a decent living, he raised a family, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think that's fair at all. I don't know what Norman would look like in twenty or thirty years if this became a sanctuary city. But I lived in Southern California for about twenty-six years, and I have driven through towns. By the way, I've also made about eighteen trips through Central America delivering helicopters to Panama. So I know what Mexico looks like in a lot of different places. There are cities in the Southern California that you cannot tell that they're in the United States except for the street signs. So you need to think about these things when you're thinking about becoming a sanctuary city. I think being inclusive has its limits, much as political correctness does. Case in point.
All right, all right, we're not gonna do that. Okay, I'm gonna ask you to have decorum and respect in the city hall, please.
I would like to point out the reason I'm saying that. Brussels, Wales, I think about two years ago, there was a bombing. There was a person that saw this individual. He thought he was up to something criminal, but he didn't say anything because he thought he might be seen as a racist. That's horrible, people lost their lives because of that. And I think when we try to be inclusive, if we get too carried away, it's gonna bite us in the butt. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment?
Honorable Mayor, Council, and Staff, thank you so much for your service. I had a question.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, yeah, Keith Steinkamp, East Side, thank you, appreciate it. This is kind of a clarification. The comment was made earlier that it was outside the jurisdictional authority of the city council and that the city council would not take action. Just wanted to see if we could get some more clarification on what that related to. Was it related to the sanctuary city recommendation? And does this mean the city council would not vote on a recommendation like that regarding sanctuary city, or what?
Well, I think we'll probably tag-team this one. I, well, I'll let you speak for yourself, but as of right now, there's no agenda item, there's no schedule to bring a sanctuary city recommendation before the council. So no timeline on that. And in terms of immigration, I think that very much was related to the sanctuary city recommendation and how, like, other issues dealing with state and federal immigration's not really under a local government purview. Did I miss anything?
Exactly it. Okay, so, so when they say it's outside of the jurisdictional authority of the city council, and the city council would not take action on it, that means they wouldn't vote on a sanctuary city recommendation? Is that, is that what that means? Yeah, direct it otherwise. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Christina Owen, I'm in Ward Four Norman. I was on the Inclusive Community Subcommittee, as well as a member of the Human Rights Commission. There was one item on here that I wrote that I wanted to give a little bit more clarification to, because I saw a lot of comments on Facebook that were kind of misinterpreting it. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to go ahead and kind of get on the record the meaning behind it. It's not numbered here on the bullets, but it is, ensure every resident has equitable access to emergency services. Some people thought that that meant we were giving away free health care. I'm not exactly sure how the emergency services translated into that for some people. But really, the thought behind it, and you have to understand, in this process, we edited this, and edited this, and edited this. So we would start with a concept, and we would work as a group to make sure everything was as clear as it could be, as concise as it could be. Unfortunately, I think maybe we made that one a little too concise in that people were getting other interpretations. But basically, when we're talking about equitable access to emergency services, we're talking about having access for ambulances, for fire departments, for police, for hospital services. And this was really a concern for the east side of Norman. That has been an issue I have heard for years from people from Ward Five, saying that, you know, they're really far removed from a lot of the services that Norman offers. And there's a lot of concern in moving the services from Porter further west in Norman, that we're gonna have an even larger section of citizens that are not gonna have the same kind of access. So that's what that line is pertaining to, to make sure that we are really focusing on if we can at all, looking at contracts or seeing what our options are to potentially expand some of the services so that our residents that are in more rural areas of Norman aren't feeling left behind in some of that. So that was really the concept behind that that I wanted to clarify. And then on a personal note, I did want to bring up another aspect, and it's not my story to tell. So I'm not going to get into details of names, or locations, or dates. But I did have a coworker who had an expired visa, and he called in a crime, thinking that it would be okay to call that in. The next day at work, a van came up, and he was deported for having an expired visa. And it was for reporting a crime. Now, I do not know if that was through Norman Police Department, I do not know if that was through the Sheriff's Department, I do not know that aspect. I do know that it did happen, and it did happen in Norman, and it was based on him calling in a crime. Now, he was able to come back, it did take him several months, but he did come back, and he worked with me again, and he told me more of that story. But I just want us to be aware that even though we can have a policy, and we think that that might be happening most of the time, it doesn't necessarily happen every time. It doesn't mean that that doesn't happen in Norman, because I know at least one man that that did happen to. And I know a lot of people say, are we looking for a solution to a problem we don't have? And of course, that's a valid question for any policy. But I think what was touched on earlier is a lot of the great things that the Norman Police Department are doing are because our chief is deciding to do those things. We don't have anything that will keep the policies that way. It could easily change with the next chief of police, or it could change, you know, in a week down the line if something were to change with policies. So in some ways, we're looking at making sure that we maintain what we are doing that is good in Norman. And I think that's kind of an aspect that we haven't really talked about, that this could actually be a way of praising our Norman Police Department and what we see in the community that we enjoy and that we agree with. So that was my other personal tidbit, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification and for serving on that committee. Any other public comment?
Well, my name is Morris Walker, live on twenty-one fifteen Saddleback Boulevard in Norman. And we heard various, I don't know if I should say recommendations, suggestions, in whatever the, whatever title you want to put to the various elements that were presented tonight. And I'd like to know, and quite frankly, one of my big concerns is sanctuary cities. One of my concerns is a lot of the things that are going on in other major cities, and I realize Norman is not in that category, and that's fine with me. But a lot of things that are happening in this country are, in my view, not what this, what made this country or helped make this country great. Now, what is the next planned step for, or if you don't have a plan right at the moment, what is your anticipated, anticipated plan for the various elements that were presented and discussed this evening?
I think we mentioned formulating a committee to discuss where we go from here. And I think we've clarified that in terms of the sanctuary city, there is no consensus to move forward with that.
Okay, so you're anticipating at this moment to not pursue anything concerning the sanctuary city? Is that, is that correct?
Given what the city manager touched on and clarified about our jurisdiction and purview as a city government, I don't think we will move forward on that.
Okay, I'm very pleased to hear that, to be honest with you. The other elements, because some of those other elements touch on some of the other aspects of sanctuary cities. As you put together this committee and they go forward, how will this population in the city of Norman know what you are pursuing or plan to be pursuing, so that people can attend either sessions like this or even a session that you put together to present it? Because quite frankly, some of those, some of those arenas that you'd visit or that you discussed this evening, depending on how they are fleshed out, can have significant impact and even draw you toward a sanctuary city directly, indirectly, accidentally, on, whatever, in whatever manner. And that's something that I am very, personally, very, very concerned about, quite frankly.
Well, thank you for your concern, and as with all committee meetings, as was with the Inclusive Community Subcommittee, they're all public meetings. All of the meetings and agendas are available on the city's website, normanok.gov. You can follow the city's social media, we actually have a YouTube channel. So if you're unable to attend the meeting for whatever reason, this meeting itself is on our YouTube channel right now. So there are many, many ways to get involved. I always recommend, for all of you, I'll give a quick shout-out to the City Managers Report and Norman News. You can sign up for that kind of, and I'm sure the Inclusive Community Survey went out through Norman News. You sign up for that, and you get announcements about things like surveys, things like ticket sales, road construction. And the City Manager Report has in it, it comes out on Fridays, and it has a week preview of all of the committees that will meet. And again, unless it says executive session, all meetings are open to the public.
Now, are these email format, the notification that goes out, is it an email? Now, are these email format, the notification that goes out, is it an email format?
Correct.
What is it?
Email format. Can email it directly to you, Annalise, if you can raise your hand? That lady right there is the lady who pushes the button and hits send.
Okay.
She can help you find out where to sign up for that and you'll get them all every week.
Now, I do want to clarify why some meetings are public meetings, there's not always the opportunity for public comment at all the meetings.
Understand.
But they are open and available for anyone to attend and observe. We do our best work when we get input from our community. And so, I, I'm excited to see a packed room tonight. I wish we had a packed room every night. I, I wish we could do that with all of the important issues facing our community. So, I appreciate you being here tonight. There are many ways to plug, plug in and tune in and I hope you will continue to do so.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elena Kavich and I live over on the trails area. And this is a question after Bible study the other day. We were discussing, you know, what's going on with sanctuary cities around the country and so forth. And then something was brought up that I wasn't aware, that what is Oklahoma City doing that they're sending some people to Norman? They made some kind of comment, they were sending some people as if they were, you know, people that are just in the streets, you know? They wanted to get, not have so many over there and they were sending them to Norman. Do you know anything about that or?
That's a great question for our chief, but I will tell you, I participated in the point in time count Thursday, January 28th, I think, and 24th. I've slept since then. And I actually asked that question directly of Lieutenant Carrie Bryant, who works closely with our homeless community. And there are no records confirming that.
Okay. I, I mean, I-
Does that mean it's not happening? I can't answer that, but there are no records confirming it.
Well, I'll tell you what is happening. Since we live close to the river, you know, over there by the trails and that, where the golf course is and so forth, we've had quite a bit of people in our neighborhood broken into because of the tents and that, you know, that are down there, living down there. We've had trucks stolen, we've actually had, one of our neighbors had somebody come in through the doggy door and in the garage, a doggy door into the house. That happened to two people, actually. And, you know, people in our neighborhood, there's at least six people in our, in, in our neighborhood that have been broken into that way. And that's why it's a concern.
No, it's, it's a very real concern.
You know, maybe certain parts of town are worse than others. And I speak fluent Spanish, I was born in Cuba and I've been here since eleven and a half. And that's another story to tell. But you have to be careful who you let in your country because that man that just spoke a little bit ago, he's exactly 100% correct. Not everybody, just because they're foreigners or illegals or whatever, you know, are good people.
Not all Americans are good people, unfortunately, as well.
Right, right.
But I would point out-
And so, and when I came here, I was a legal immigrant, Catholic Charities is who helped us Cubans to get out of communism.
Thank you.
So, anyway, I don't want to go into all of that, but I, I had a concern because I heard they were busing people over here and I thought, well, you know, is it true or not?
No, that, that is definitely a real concern and I appreciate you, you sharing those concerns. We, as a council, are hearing more and more concerns about increasing homelessness in our community. We have not only a great existing continuum of care committee made up of our hardworking city staff and a variety of nonprofits who work with our, our homeless residents, but also we created an ad hoc committee to address homelessness, which Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Scanlon and Councilmember Petron are a part of. We've done the emergency evening warming shelter that will be here through March, I believe. 29th of February, I was close. But Councilmember Scanlon, do you have additional comments about?
Yes. You mentioned people being bused or whatever down here.
That's what I heard, I don't know if it's true or not.
The implication being that the, the number of homeless are increasing. Several of us, Councilmember Hall and myself and, and Petron, went up to the Resource Center that the Homeless Alliance runs in Oklahoma City to see what their facility looked like, to see if there were any lessons learned for us in terms of things we might do, services we might provide. One of the points of discussion was what's happening in terms of the numbers. And Dan Strong, who happens to run, he's a Norman resident but runs that facility, made the comment that they'd seen an uptick and they wanted to know if we were sending people to them. And I think the answer is that for whatever reason, economic or weather or whatever it may be, that the numbers are increasing in Norman, in Oklahoma City, and probably in many other locations, but I know of those two. So, it's not a matter of people being transferred one to the other at all.
Well, you know how things get started.
Oh, I understand.
You just don't know.
Understand.
I, I just thought since I was here, I would just ask that and see if y'all knew.
And the other comment I would make, and you, you talked about crimes in your neighborhood, it's always important to report those crimes. They may or may not be perpetrated by the homeless that you see.
Well, the ones, they have reported all of them and three that I know did come from the river. I don't know that the other ones did.
And, and I'm not saying that you're wrong in that, I, I am, because I've, I've entered this question and pursued this at other areas of town, particularly in Ward 6. We look at the crime statistics and, and we don't really see increases and certainly don't see anything that is attributable to, to homeless any more than it is to any other citizen. So, so I just-
Yeah, I'm not trying to pick on them, I'm just telling you what our experience has been with three people that I know that it, they did come from down there because the police said they did.
I'm just making the point that it's important to report and then let the chips fall where they may in terms of the perpetrator.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scott, do you want to speak now or do we want to continue with comments? Are there any more public comments? Okay, yes, I wanted to.
My name is Jim Cox and I live at 4400 Brookfield Drive in Norman. And I'm just curious, I'm just, whose idea was it to even entertain the idea of considering Norman as a sanctuary city? Who came up with this?
Well, I think that's what this whole meeting is about, sir. It was from the Inclusive Community Subcommittee. It was one of the 15 recommendations.
The Subcommittee came up with this idea?
Yes.
I see.
Based on over 200 survey responses along with the personal experiences of over 40 Norman residents.
I see, interesting. You know, I just wanted to make one comment that I felt about this and I think a lot of other people have the same feeling. You know, there are those like the lady you just met who came through our country as a legal immigrant, you know? And I think to, to consider attracting or patting on the back or being a magnet to those people who have broken our laws and we know, we have no way of vetting these people. Some of them are great people, I understand that, most of them are, probably 90% are, but there's 10% of them that we don't know where they come from, what diseases they carry, who they, what their political alignment is, we don't know anything about them. And from my understanding of the meeting here tonight, it sounded like there's kind of a homeless issue here in Norman. Did you guys pick that up too?
That was one of the recommendations, actually.
It sounded like there's not enough affordable housing here in Norman, from what I thought. So, what are we going to do if we bring all these indigent people into Norman as a magnet to, where are we going to put them? Are they going to stay in your house or your backyard or your garage apartment? I just wonder, what, what are we thinking about this? It makes absolutely no sense to me. And, you know, so, so I think that we need to really consider when we're thinking about being a magnet, the people that we have no obligation to and don't belong, belong here and we know nothing about.
Sir, as we stated earlier, we're not moving forward on this, but, but thank you for your comments. I really appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I'll be here again if y'all do bring forward, I promise.
I look forward to it. Come back on other times, too. We talk about a lot of great things.
Absolutely.
Okay. Invitation.
Anne Gallagher, 2513 Woodsong Drive. Two things. One, the childcare issue is really important and I totally understand that and agree with that, but when you have childcare, you better have background checks going on. I don't care if they're coming from the university, I don't care if there are social clubs that are trying to get ours, there has got to be background checks. I've worked in school systems for 40 years, there's got to be background checks. Let me say that again, there's got to be background checks. And the second thing is, you know, the committee worked really hard, but almost everything on there costs a lot of money. And this city is strapped at the moment and you've got a list of things that need to be taken care of before I think you're going to address any of it.
No, I, I think we're all aware of that and it's just nice to have the list for when we're in a position to move forward on those. So, thank you for your comment.
Hi, hello everyone. My name is Sarah Wormker, I live over on Cruz Street. And I do have some thoughts on what's been said in this room tonight. One thing that doesn't cost any money at all is having an open mind. And I've heard a lot of comments in this room tonight that frankly have made me just feel really sad and feel that I think people are using language in a way that maybe shows that there's a lot of generational differences and a lot of experiential differences in why people choose to use certain words. I'm a language teacher, so I teach Spanish. But one of the things that I also teach to my students is to try to build their cultural competency, so, and also their historical knowledge. So, we are on Caddo and Wichita land, so really anyone that's here that's not a member of a Native American tribe is an immigrant or descendant of an immigrant. I include myself in that statement. I also try to help my students understand that, that when we talk about immigration, a lot of times, and we've seen this happen in this room tonight, sanctuary city is a code word for immigration. Immigration is code word for Hispanic slash Mexicans slash Spanish speaking, all of these things. And these populations are not a monolith. They, you know, I, I work with people who live here in Norman who speak Spanish that are from many different countries. We've heard people with different backgrounds that came at different times. But I think another thing that we need to remember, you know, a gentleman earlier mentioned Southern California and I wonder if he was talking about Los Angeles or San Diego or any of these cities that in fact, many of them, when they were established as part of the United States, as we saw happen in New Mexico and in many other places, the government originally was conducted in Spanish. The US doesn't have an official language. And I say all of this mostly pleading with those of you who were applauding after what was said earlier, just to please, yes, to just to please try to think about how the words that you're saying might impact people who have different life experiences than you have and how maybe approaching these issues with more of an open mind and less of a sense of entitlement to resources that while scarce, I think in this town, we can really appreciate that we do have a lot to go around. And there are many things that we can do that don't cost any money at all, that will have a huge impact on the quality of life for a lot of people, especially considering people of color and people who are from marginalized communities. So, I appreciate that everyone here tonight has spoken so thoughtfully about what they had to say, but I just wouldn't have been able to sleep tonight if I didn't say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Come on.
Can I just say one thing?
Let's make sure everyone has a chance to comment.
Cynthia Rogers, Ward 4. I really appreciate the speaker before us and I think when people hear sanctuary city, they envision a place that everybody flees because they're in trouble and they're breaking the law. And I encourage everybody to not think that way, that's not really what it means. And I think that's perhaps a generational thing of when, what the younger generation, not me, would think about what that means and what maybe the older generation thinks about what sanctuary means. So, I too encourage everybody to just not be scared of people that are different or from different places with different experiences. But what I was going to say was about housing and affordable housing, I will say there are students that also can't afford housing. And when we talk about student housing, I think what we're mostly talking about is the market rate, the higher end student housing that's sort of gentrifying our campus corner neighborhoods and squeezing people out. But, and, and I encourage us to remember that students are also under housed and can't afford housing and they're trying to get educated. We do have a lot of students that come that are very wealthy, they're coming from Texas, then they go home to Texas. We're pretty accommodating to them in, in our building rules and our zoning. And, and what we're seeing mostly is relocating where student housing used to be. I, I think we did a study not too long ago that said we have an oversupply of student housing. So, we're getting more student housing and more expensive student housing and we're relocating where students are living. And so, but I think there is affordable housing options, maybe not on campus corner. And I think we can explore those. Also, there, not me, but I have a colleague who's a housing policy expert and I'm sure we could convince him to help us look at things. Rent control is, is something that scares me because it's usually not the way to go, it doesn't work the way people think. But I think we have opportunities. And one opportunity I think I would love to see us explore is to work with the county and also work with Griffin because a lot of the homeless people are sort of discharged and they're stable, but they don't get back home. And I think we could do some things that are very affordable to help people get back to where they have a support network rather than say goodbye, figure out what you're going to do and they're left on our doorstep. So, I think that's something we could do, we should work with the county for sure and with the state since we have their facilities that are sort of the impetus for a lot of our homelessness. So, I, I'm willing, housing's not really my thing, but I'm willing to help find experts that would work on these issues, you know, tell you at least the academic literature. So, I encourage that sort of partnership that maybe hasn't been part of this conversation so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. I don't want the young ladies to think that, oh, I'm sorry.
Kay Holiday, I live on Conley Lane. I want to take an opportunity to thank the Advisory Committee who spent so many hours and so much heartfelt deliberation. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Marjon. I know you're feeling a bit underappreciated right now and I want to apologize on behalf of those who have made you feel so. Creating and continuing to develop this inclusive community is a vital part of the survivability of Norman. I've lived here since 1963 and I appreciate those efforts, the city council, any committee member who served, I appreciate that. A homogeneous population is not a very productive one. So, I want to leave you with the fact that we are built, we are a nation built on immigration and thank God for that because other than that, almost none of us would be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick Green, I'm in Ward 6. And I really appreciate being able to come tonight, I didn't know about this till the last minute. And my wife and I sat and talked and, you know, one of the things I'm thankful for is that I am a citizen of the United States and that I'm a resident in Norman and that we have a lot of things available to us here. But when we sat down, a lot of the things I'm going to say were already repeated. One of them is, the main concern is besides, I know we're just considering the sanctuary city, would be the impact it'll have on the city of Norman and Cleveland County as well. A lot of things tonight were talked about, cost and availability, and I know these are all just being considered, but that was also a concern. And we do welcome immigrants. And we do welcome immigrants, but there's also a vetting process that's been going on in the state as well. And the governor just approved 220 new immigrants to the state. I would also ask those who are considering this sanctuary city, why do we need to do this in terms of what we're already doing statewide? And I would think because of what we talked about with communications that there's very few residents in Norman who are aware of what were proposed, what's been proposed tonight.
To clarify, nothing has been proposed tonight. This was a list of recommendations. Just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. It seems to me that there seems to be more of an agenda from the city government to operate the way it's, okay. I'll rephrase this. Okay, it seems to me to more, to be more of just an agenda rather than to be a city government operating the way it's supposed to be. That was me, not my wife. And the last one is, how would you, how would you be aware of not letting in gang members if this were to come to pass? Would you really know that you have trouble with gangs? When we moved back, my wife was born and raised in Norman. And we moved back to take care of her parents. And when we did, the first thing I noticed was the gang graffiti. We had lived in Florida and you could already see that happening there. But it seemed to me that nobody was aware of what was going on. And either by choice or by not care, or not understanding some of those things. And I believe we still have a problem with gangs as well as, especially the Mexican population and a lot of other things. Also, I noticed that my wife had mentioned, and we've talked about this, where some of the businesses that have been operating in the Norman area, specifically Eastside, still has a major problem with homeless where they even disrupt the businesses or they are not being rude to them. But they have to deal with that in terms of to continue their business, which is a loss of time and property. And they're very kind to them. They're not trying to kick them out. And the police officers have been very kind that have come out. So, I think some of those things still need to be addressed, looked at, and figured out before we go ahead with some of the other things that are going on. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done in Norman. I know there's a lot of congestion traffic wise as well. And adding more people. And it takes people's time, effort, and finances to consider these things and pursue them. So, with the girl that was here before, I say Dios los bandiga and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Mine gonna be very brief.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
What's the question?
Can you introduce yourself?
Jack Holt, I live out by Lake Thunderbird. And I think most of the people here tonight are concerned about sanctuary city. So, I'd suggest you drop that phrase completely. Just, you know, it has a bad connotation and that's what they're afraid of, you know? So, if you can get rid of the phrase completely, you know, it really helps, okay?
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we need to help her?
I'm Eileen Harrelson, 706 Southberry Road. My husband's family have been in Norman for over 100 years. And I've been here, around here a long time myself. But we've had some problems with the homeless in our, in our shop. And they would come and they would, they'd tear up our, they'd tear up the ground. They'd tear up the fences. They'd climb the gates so that it was useless. They've done a lot of damage, plus they did a lot of stealing. And we've had the police out there multiple times. Now, it's better now because of the police actions and because of the fact that they've moved someplace else because they've built the new apartments there on the corner of Porter and Robinson. So, back behind the East Robinson. But I just wanted to say that they're, they're moving around. And again, the sanctuary city thing, it's illegal. And we don't, we don't need to fight that kind of a battle with, with the federal government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Chica Terina Mendez. So, I am a resident of Norman. I came here from Bolivia, that is South America. And I want to all thank you to not continue to go with this, the, what is the, that you guys are wanting to people to come here from other countries.
Ooh, that's the not, the right way to say that statement. One of the recommendations is sanctuary city.
Sanctuary city, see. I lived in Los Angeles, Santana, Colorado, parts of San Francisco. And I lived and I seen with my very eyes what a sanctuary city does to a city. And it's not good. At the beginning, it's great. But then when all the crime comes, then everybody gets, it's not good for anybody. And I think as Norman, we should focus on our issues here, which is, are the homeless, people that are everywhere, our schools. There are a lot of children at schools that, that don't have, that their food comes from the school, that they don't have money. I've seen that. Our elderly. And just people that have disabilities that we can concentrate on instead of bringing all that extra unnecessary monetary hardship on us. I'm not saying that come here, it's not a good thing. But legally, definitely yes. Because my story is very long and I don't have time to say it. But I want to all thank you that, for you guys not to consider that. Because eventually it will hurt all of us and I have seen that.
Thank you. I wanna, all right, guys, you're all adults. I ask you respectfully to please keep it together. I hope we can do that and be kind to one another as we share our comments and thoughts. I want to clarify what I said earlier. These are recommendations. There is no formal course of action on the table to move forward with the sanctuary city recommendation. Did everyone hear that? I'm gonna do the, the school thing. Give me some head nods. Yes, Mayor Clark, we heard you. Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Leroy Walser from Woodlake Estates. And I just wanted to stand here as a generational testimony of someone who loves living in Norman and who loves to have Norman understand the basic, basic root issues that I think are being touched at a little bit from different points of view. If you were to look at me, am I a youngster or am I an oldster? I want to know, I want you to know that my ancestry came from Europe. My ancestry came from Spain. My ancestry came from Switzerland. And so, I am somewhat of an inclusive character. We have lots of history in the family. I also want you to know that I was born and raised in Mexico and I have a Mexican citizenship passport. And I also want you to know that I have a United States passport. And I want you to know that I've had many years of struggles with the United States immigration folks. It took me five years to demonstrate that I was a native born American citizen because my mother was born and raised in Arizona. So, talk about inclusivity. I also worked for the federal government in Washington DC. And I was in charge of the group that was the special group and possibilities. And we had every imaginable person in that group that we coordinated in saying, what is the best for all of us? And when we make good, just laws and we follow those good, just laws and we do it in a consensus manner as much as possible, we will be much better off in this country. And I appreciate a lot of the work that this committee has done. And I think there's some things in there that just need to be looked at again for the basic root issues and the paths that will lead us in the wrong direction if we're not very, very careful at this point in time. And I thank you very much for the work that you do for us in City of Norman.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Jones, I live in Ward 6. I just wanted to point out that sanctuary city is a blatant violation of federal law. And I don't want to live in a sanctuary city. I think that many of these problems can be handled without taking such drastic measures. And I think some of these people have pointed out, they didn't use those terms, but it could be opening a Pandora's box of things that we don't know and we won't want to experience. And as a senior citizen here in this city, I'd just like to see some money come loose to have a place for us to go. And a lot of people my age are talking about that. Are we even going to have one? So, some of the things that have come up are just, there's a lot of money that needs to be gathered up and how will it be?
No, thank you. I, I think council is very much aware of the long list of needs and financial challenges we have ahead of us. But I appreciate you pointing that out. Any other public comment? All right, thank you all for coming. I will move to council comment now. Councilmember Scott.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending this evening. It's one of our more well-attended study sessions since I've been on the council the past two years. Lots of public comment, that's great. Heard a lot of things tonight. I am a former public school teacher. I used to teach Latin, saw way magistra, they're in the back, a fellow language teacher, gotta stick together. And so, I feel it is my duty to make sure that we cover a couple of things and educate the, so, as a former Latin teacher, I know that we idealize Rome as one of the, like, as the cradle of Western civilization. And Rome itself was a asylum city, actually, for actual criminals. It was built on fratricide, brothers murdering brothers. And then they brought and welcomed criminals, actual criminals, into the city of Rome. And then they went to neighboring areas and raped their women. It's called the Rape of Sabine Women in order to secure their lineage. When we discuss sanctuary cities, or as this gentleman pointed out, this is, the word is really what we're getting caught up on. It's the phrasing, it's the messaging. We're talking about just keeping people safe in the places where they reside. And due to their documentation or their lack of documentation. The word alien comes from the Latin alienus, meaning foreign. So, those are a couple of things when we're talking about Western Civ in this world that we're living in. As far as taking jobs, this is, I believe, a misdirected sort of pressure. In the 1930s, for example, during the stock market crash, what happened then was actually a, the lack of regulations on banks and lending that caused the stock market to crash. It wasn't Mexicans coming here, taking jobs. Because as we know, during the Reefer Madness era, it was rooted in racism and classism after the Mexican Revolution in 1910 when people began to flood here seeking again a better life and community. And so, in the 1937 Henry Anslinger and the Marijuana Tax Act made it very difficult to attain cannabis, but it is not about cannabis. It is about, again, the messaging around what actually happened. It was the removal of regulations and it was on corporations and the lack of unions. And what actually brought people together was unionization and working class solidarity. And, but the messaging at the time was putting it on people of color, specifically Mexican people, saying then at that time that they are taking our jobs. What jobs are being taken? In fact, there are plenty of jobs to go around. It is not, it is incumbent upon us as city officials, as, you know, legislators, as a government entity to make sure that we have, you know, low unemployment rates and that we are providing quality jobs for all people. And so, again, misdirected anger. It is not people who are taking jobs from anyone. It is corporations exploiting people and exploiting government stating that there aren't enough to go around and they are trying to cover their tracks. As far as being a magnet, we often label ourselves. We want to say Norman is a place where we want to live, work, and play. So, what you're saying to me is that you want certain people to live and work and play here. And I want to apologize to anyone who feels unwelcome here due to those comments. And as far as money goes, there was a lady who made some comments about money for the senior center. Perhaps if we stop wasting money on detaining people for some undocumented status, we can maybe get some federal funding for these things. Because right now, those are where our federal funds are going and it doesn't seem like an astute way to spend our money. So, most of that was just a historical sort of context, that history repeats itself. I want to again reiterate that unity among working people, working class people, white, black, brown, whatever, is really, is really the priority in protecting each other. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
Thank you. I think there are all sorts of examples we can use about the federal government, the state government, the local government. There's several ways in which the state of Oklahoma is defying federal law right now in regard to the Affordable Care Act, which was passed in 2009, 2010. State of Oklahoma has been actively disobeying that federal law since then. Most Oklahomans support that. I mean, most Oklahomans support the state of Oklahoma not complying with that federal law. I would say most Oklahoma voters feel that way. Medical marijuana, Oklahoma voters voted for that. But it is federally illegal still. We are flying in the face of federal government right now. So, there's lots of things we can talk about. I know the state government really dislikes it when the federal government tells them what to do. I know the city government, we don't like it when the state tells us what to do. We are all elected by voters of this city. State representatives are elected by their voters. And many times, it was the same people. So, it's always kind of confusing to me when a state representative wants to take power away from a local representative when they're elected by generally the same people usually. To me, I'm a fourth generation of Norman, of my family to call Norman home. I always have viewed Norman as somewhere I wanted to make sure every resident of this city felt was safe. That if any resident of this city witnessed an assault or a burglary, that they would feel comfortable reporting that to the police department. I think the goal of most cities is to create a place that people want to live. The reason why we fix streets and have a good school system and invest in water infrastructure The reason why we fix streets and have a good school system and invest in water infrastructure and all these types of things is because we want people that are from Norman to stay here. And we hope that we can attract good people to want to move here. There's lots of bad people in the country. You know, one of the worst terrorist acts ever committed in the United States, a few miles up the road, was committed by a homegrown person. We can't tell who's bad just by looking at the color of their skin. I think, again, for me, is for Norman to be a place where everybody feels safe, where they can go again and report an incident if they see it and not fear that something may happen to them. I believe it's the federal government's job to enforce federal immigration law. I don't believe it's the Norman Police Department's responsibility to check immigration status. But I understand that if you are arrested and taken to the county jail, that that's what will happen. But if you get pulled over in Norman for a, you know, going 45 in a 40, and you get a speeding ticket, the Norman, there shouldn't be any incidents, incident where the, instance where the Norman Police Department then asks you for your, your legal status. Unless they're going to ask everybody. If it's a policy that every single person in Norman that gets pulled over, regardless of their skin color or what part of town they live in, if we're going to ask everybody, then we need to ask everybody. But again, I think it's the federal government's job to enforce that law. And it's our local police department's job to enforce and protect our residents. When it comes to homeless issues, I don't know of any specific cases where people have been brought to Norman. But over the years, growing up here, I've definitely heard many stories. Because there's a lot of cities and towns in Oklahoma that do not offer any services at all for homelessness. There's some cities and towns in Oklahoma that prefer to pretend like it doesn't exist. It's not something, it's not a problem they have in their community. And I have heard stories over the years of homelessness, homeless people being picked up in other towns and brought to Norman. Norman has a, an abundance of services, I would say, compared to many other communities. We have a lot of great nonprofit organizations in Norman. And Norman is a relatively very safe place to be compared to other cities of this size. For instance, living on the street in Norman is a whole lot safer than living on the street in Oklahoma City or Tulsa or Laton or Dallas, Kansas City. You're much less likely to be a victim of assault in Norman if you live on the street compared to some of these bigger metropolitan areas. I've mentioned this before, many of you know. When I was first elected to city council six years ago, my dad was homeless. He lived in Oklahoma City. He lived, didn't live on the street, but he lived at the Jesus House. I actually drove to Oklahoma City that day to pick him up so he could come and see me get sworn in. And then afterwards, I had to take him back up there. My dad suffered from alcohol, you know, issues that led to that. He's doing much better now. He's doing very well now. But that's something that he experienced. He has firsthand experience with what it's like to be homeless in Norman and in OKC. And my dad had a really great job when I was growing up. And we had a pretty good life, I think. It would have been hard for me to imagine that 10 years later, my dad would be homeless. But that is what happened. You never know what can happen. I've heard a story about a Norman resident last, we may, we may have even heard it, where it was this past, past spring or summer where got divorced, that, yeah, got, lost his home, lost his job right after that, and then he was living on the street in Norman. It could happen so quickly, you know, none of us would, none of us think it will happen to us, but it could. And so, a lot of cities have struggled with, do we offer services? And if we offer services, is that going to attract more homeless people from the surrounding area? But what happens if we don't offer any services and there's still homeless people in Norman? Because there still would be. We're a big enough city, I think, that even if we offered no services, we would still have people that live on the streets of the city. So, I think this is a very complicated issue, the property issue. People going on your property and whether you can get them off your property is, I could find, I could understand would be very frustrating for many people. But I just want us all to remember that everyone is a person. And they've all had life experiences that we don't know about. We don't know how they got there. Mental illness is a major issue in Norman especially. As the services at Central State Griffin Hospital have been reduced over the decades, I don't think there's less people with mental health issues than there were in the 1970s and 80s. Probably more. But there are less services of that kind and facilities like that to address them. And those people, in many cases, end up on the streets in towns like Norman. So, I just, I appreciate all the work that the, that the committee has done. These are some really great recommendations that we're going to have to really think about up here. And these are the type of discussions, as Mayor Clark has mentioned, that we've got to have. We need this input. This is the first that we've even had a chance to discuss this, any of these issues as a whole. We've had no public feedback about it until this meeting. So, this is what it's about. This is what local government's about. This is why I like local government, because anybody can come down here and get at the podium and tell us what you think. And maybe I won't agree with you. Maybe you don't agree with me. But that's the beauty of that podium. And that doesn't exist at the state Capitol and in Washington DC. There's no podium for the public to get up to and speak. So, I appreciate the opportunity and I can assure everyone that we will continue thoroughly considering all these issues in the city of Norman from this dais. And appreciate all of you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Bierman.
So, I wasn't sure if I was actually going to bring this up, and then I heard it mentioned again tonight. I don't think any of you want us to be the subjective arbiters of what does or does not deserve an audience in front of this body. Because I can imagine that if the shoe were on the other foot and there was a policy that all of you turned out here for, that you wanted us to pass, and we said, "No, we're not even going to listen to you because we've made the subjective determination that your cause or your issue is not important to us." That is not a path you want us to walk down. City commissions, city committees are given the freedom of speech and freedom of expression to come up with their own ideas. And they deserve the opportunity to share them publicly, just as you all deserve the opportunity, whether it's on social media, by email, phone call, in person, or here at the podium, to have your perspectives heard. You are all here because you care about this issue. And that includes the 40 people who worked on this subcommittee, who are Norman residents, and deserve the opportunity to be heard. Some of you who reached out to me about this issue, asking me to close my ears and not even listen to what this committee had to say, were the same people who last year reached out to me and called me all kinds of horrible names. Because when someone stood at this podium and talked about wanting to create a sanctuary city for the unborn, told me, as a Jew, to bend my knee to Jesus because that's what Christ compelled me to do, I turned my chair. Because I so strongly disagreed with this person that I could not even look them in the face. But I got dozens of comments, threats, telling me that I was wrong, that as an elected official, it was my job to provide the opportunity for people to speak their minds. And so, it offends me that anyone would tell this body that we should not even listen to this recommendation, that we should not even have had a meeting to talk about it and to simply hear it. The assumption was that by simply providing this opportunity, that this was a done deal. Or that we were somehow giving credence to some opinion by letting it be verbalized in this room. And so, I'm going to abide by the recommendation from our city staff, that this is likely not something that we really have the purview over. But I do not want to walk down the path of saying that there are some things that we can't even talk about. Myself individually, nor us collectively, should be making that determination. Because there might be recommendations that come from a city committee that we don't like and that you all do. And you deserve that same opportunity to come and speak your case at that time. So, like it or not, approve of this policy or not, it is important that we have these conversations. And I do my due diligence. I've reached out to many groups and had lots of conversations about this, with individuals, with organizations that work with people who are facing these situations. And frankly, even the immigrant services organization that I spoke to is not super fond of sanctuary city policies. But they, they have ideas for ways that we can encourage the federal government to right-side its immigration program because it is drastically broken. It is underfunded. Our immigration court in Oklahoma City was closed, so the only opportunity is now in Dallas. Backlogs are months or years long. The system that we have does not work. And that certainly has an impact on undocumented immigration. So, I just want all of you to think very carefully before you come and tell an elected representative who was elected to represent, give or take, 12,000 people in their ward individually and 120,000 people collectively, that you want us to close our ears because you don't like something. I respect all of your opinions and I have responded to every single person who has reached out to me about this. And I will continue to do so. But the feedback that I got is discouraging for elected officials to continue to engage. If you want us to continue to engage, please do so with the thought of what would happen if the shoe were on the other foot. Please. That is all I am asking of you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hall.
First of all, I just really want to take the time to acknowledge the tireless efforts of the Human Rights Commission and the Inclusive Community Subcommittee. Before I sat in this chair, I've spent lots and lots of hours on Norman community, Norman committees and commissions. So, I understand the investment of your time, the investment of your energy to do this work. And it's work that we asked you to do. So, I want to acknowledge all of the work that you put into it. It's a large committee. I know, just from my own experience, what kind of give and take that requires and the kind of heartfelt conversations that you had to have with one another to arrive at what you're recommending to us tonight. So, I just want to make sure that you understand that we really appreciate the work that you do. And we really appreciate the work that all of our residents do when they step up to volunteer, to be part of the process. So, thank you for that. And I also want to make sure that we remember that this was a long list, 14, 15 recommendations. This is the first step to be presented at a study session. This is how this works. This is part of the process. And so, there were so many areas and issues to be considered and to be pursued. And we will do that. We will move forward and, and work through all of the things that you have recommended. So, I just want to acknowledge your contribution to our community and say thank you for your work and thank you for taking the time to present all of the information that you did tonight with such care and thought and dignity. So, thank you all. The only other thing I want to say, because so many of, we've already covered so many things that I would touch on. But I just want to acknowledge my own grandparents. Because they had the courage to immigrate to the United States. So, you know, I'm a granddaughter of immigrants. All of my grandparents were not born in the United States. So, I wouldn't be sitting here tonight if they didn't have the courage to make that step, to come here.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
Well, as I said in my earlier comments, this was one of the topics that I've gotten the most calls about. And I was surprised. I hadn't been aware of the Human Rights Commission Inclusive Community Subcommittee. I hadn't really paid attention. So, I really appreciate your work on this. And I'm sorry that there were some kind of hateful comments and mixed in with the mess. But what I've tried to do over the last couple of weeks, as I've talked to my constituents on Facebook and by phone and email, is understand what the perceived problem in their minds with this being. And the, the best I could kind of call from it all was, it's mine and nobody else can have it and I don't want, I'm scared. And, and I did have one guy that was a tile setter and he just wants a level playing field to work on. And I think that's valid. I think that's something we can work on as a community because I think that actually addresses both sides of that coin. And I said that earlier. But as a human, and I, I'm just perplexed and disappointed with the humanity in our community. I have to focus on the helpers, really. I have to focus on the people that show love and compassion and go ahead and take some chances on some other humans. I focus on those people because the rest of them kind of break my heart. Especially, you know, they didn't even stick around to listen to our comments on this subject. And, and, you know, several of them were here, had come here from other countries and probably other situations. They had these conversations after they left their church. And I want to, I want to, you know, kind of point out that in the Bible, God says that you don't have to worry about the resources. They're going to be there. So, I wish people would take some of those lessons and use them here in our community and in real-world setting and in practice where you have somebody who's a human, who through maybe no fault of their own or governmental situations are good humans. And I, I really understand that there are bad humans. There are bad humans in this room, I'm betting. There are bad humans that blow up buildings in Oklahoma City. My brother was killed by a Hispanic gang member. I grew up on the south side of Oklahoma City. My dad was incarcerated. Be a good human and stop being racist.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon.
I admit, when I first saw this report, I was a little bit irked. I was hung up on the sentence that I mentioned earlier about not being able to get information on homeless programs because I really felt that was not true. I was also concerned about the use of the incendiary term sanctuary city without definition, which is why I asked the question, "What do you mean?" That said, I, I'm still a little bit concerned about the homeless thing. And I look forward to working with you and, and the members of the Human Rights Commission and Subcommittee, if it continues to exist, on those issues. It's a big deal and we need all the help we can get. That said, I look at some of the other recommendations. And hearing them as you talk through those, those recommendations, I think some of them are pretty positive. And while we're not going to take any specific action on this report, there's still a lot of food for thought and things that we can do positively. So, I guess as a general statement, my first impression, I'm not as negative on the report as I once was. So, I look forward to working on some positive things and helping the city find its way. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
I'd like to take a little more optimistic view of the evening. And the report was excellent. I appreciate, appreciate the work of the committee. And there were a lot of good things in it. And a couple of things that really, the one thing that I really kind of liked the most, I guess, was the equality officer position. You know, this whole idea of creating opportunity for everyone, whether you're on the margins economically or socially or whatever the reason. You know, a training program where you would reach out and educate businesses, things like that, and how to reach out to the marginalized people of our town, I think is a great program. And I just want to say, if I, we're calling off memory. I think we're doing a lot of positive things with homelessness in the city. And, you know, of course, you can always do better. But, you know, if I remember, just off the top of my head, this 200 and some homeless people were identified in 2018. And those people, when re-identified in 2019, there were only 90-ish, if I remember right, that were still homeless. 100 and something had been moved into programs. And our police department, and I can't say enough about the work of Chief Foster and all these different areas that were brought up tonight because it interacts with the police so much. But, you know, once a month, is it... But, you know, once a month, is it, Councilmember Scanlon, where we, once a month, they, people have the opportunity to meet with the police department, and they help them with their identification?
Oh.
Quarterly.
Frequency.
Yeah. But, I mean, I've learned so much about homelessness during my time on council, and it was just really amazing to me how many people are homeless from the circumstances everyone described. And everyone has an experience with a homeless person, I bet. But some people don't have their social security card or their driver's license. There are these basic forms of, that we take a lot, take a lot for granted. And our police department, every quarter, has been moving eight, 10, 12 people, you know, out of, off the streets into something, just because they could get their identification, so they could start to get a job and start to get an apartment and go through the normal mechanisms of life. And so, we are doing a lot of things, and we're a great city, and I appreciate everyone's work and all the people that came here tonight and expressed their opinions. It was very valuable to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. For my final comment, I will just thank you all for coming. Again, we do our best work when we have input from the community. So, I hope you will continue to come back, because we talk about a lot of important stuff in this building. And again, unless it's marked Executive Session, they're always open. And I believe, if you haven't signed up for the Norman News Newsletter, it's super easy to do. It's on the city's website, normanok.gov. I want to thank our co-chairs and the committee again. What you did was incredibly valuable, and it has changed Norman already with the steps that we've taken, and it will continue to do so. It's very much something that we will work on. But now that we have actionable items to consider and look at, that will make our job a lot easier. There will always be challenges, but to have that community input is so, so valuable. So, I cannot thank you enough for that. The idea for the committee came from the response that we received in changing Debar Avenue. I think we still have a long way to go in Norman, Oklahoma, and that's nothing to be afraid of. I think being an inclusive community is an economic issue. It means that when people are looking for a place to live, when they're bringing businesses and employees and students to our community, they're going to want to pick here. And I'm excited for the future that we have as a city. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for their very thoughtful comments tonight. I know that you didn't ask for that committee to be formed, and none of us played a role in forming the recommendations, but I appreciate you being open-minded and hearing them and doing your due diligence, and it's an honor to work with every single one of you. So, with that, we will take a break before we hit item number two. Where's Kate? Kate? I'm sorry. Councilmember Bierman? Councilmember Hall? Councilmember Scanlon? Councilwoman Holman? Here they come. I see them. All right. As they make their way back in here, we will move on to item number two, which is a continued discussion regarding vegetative management of the rights-of-way on Berry Road and the City of Norman tree ordinance. I believe we're going to have a presentation...
City Attorney.
From the city attorney. All right. Thank you, City Attorney Walker. If you will start for us.
Thank you. Bryce would pull up my slides. Thank you. If you go on to the first one. So, we talked about this a few weeks ago, and of course, we began these discussions back in the summer of 2017, talking about the renewal of the franchise with OGNB. And then, while we were working on that, the Tree Board was also working on an ordinance that would address tree removal outside of the utility maintenance context. This is just some of the stuff we went over back at that time. There's a lot of laws in place, both federally and at the state level, that restrict our ability to regulate utility companies, and they're working in the area of vegetative maintenance. These are just some of the examples. The Federal Power Act, which empowered FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Originally, they did not regulate things like electric grid reliability, but that was changed in 2005. And so, now, they look at things like vegetative management as it relates to all users, owners, and operators of the bulk power system, and they oversee large transmission lines. So, our utility companies have to consider those regulations. If you go to the next one. This is some of the standards. The vegetation has to be managed to prevent encroachments into this minimum vegetation clearance distance of lines. Depends on the voltage, of course. And then, inspections of transmission lines are required every year, and they have to do an annual vegetation work plan and complete that plan every year as it relates to those transmission lines. The Corporation Commission here in Oklahoma has general supervision of all public utilities. They, of course, oversee the fixing of rates for public utilities, and they promulgate rules affecting services, operation, management, and the conduct of business. A little bit different in the context of rural electric cooperatives, but generally, rules promulgated by the Corporation Commission prevail over city ordinances that materially affect the rights and duties of franchise utilities, whether it's in rate setting or in the day-to-day affairs of the utility. Each utility is required to have a reliability program that limits the frequency and duration of electric service interruptions and to maintain good reliability levels and sustain them over time. And so, they're looking at the age, distribution, and location of equipment on each circuit, how many customers you have on the circuit, the location and density of trees on the system, the annual vegetation plan, and the impacts on the distribution system reliability of animals, winds, storms, ice, and accidents. Vegetation management is defined as all activities associated with the trimming, removal, or control of plant material in the proximity of energized electric utility conductors and equipment. And again, focused solely on reliability, really, here. They have to submit an annual plan to the Corporation Commission for review that defines the activities they're going to undertake, when they're going to take them, how they're going to implement them, how they're going to assess whether they were successful, and the name and contact info of the company representative familiar with the plan. At a minimum, utilities have to perform this maintenance on a four-year cycle. The utilities that are under the jurisdiction of the Corporation Commission in terms of rates have to track and record all vegetation management costs, and those get tied back to your specific rate. They have to make a reasonable attempt to give any property owner, customer, or tenant notice prior to doing work and to accommodate their request to be present during the work, unless, of course, it's an emergency. And then, the goal is to get the repairs made as quickly as possible. The State Department of Agriculture also regulates some aspects that we looked at when we were developing this ordinance. They really regulate the pesticides, and they specifically regulate them for right-of-way maintenance and ground line treatment of utility pools. So, you'll see in the ordinance that we did not include any regulations related to that, because they are very clearly preempting us. So, the ordinance we adopted almost a year ago provided for the utilities to give the city notice. So, we're ensuring cooperation between the city and the utilities to help us identify the areas they've got scheduled for maintenance, give us a certified arborist to serve as the contact person, and identify any contractors to be used. A lot of this has to do with the fact that when people see this work being done and they didn't know it was coming, they call the city. They don't call the electric company. So, this helps us respond to those concerns, and we're working well with the utility companies. A notice has to be provided to the owners and residents. It can be in the form of door hangers, mailed letters, posted signs. They have to be willing to meet if requested. Again, consistent with state law, notice provision is waived in the event of an emergency. In that case, they just give as much reasonable and possible notice. And then, for dangerous trees, no notice has to be provided to the city, but they have to still provide reasonable notice to owner, the owner and/or resident. We included best practices for pruning. So, these are the ANSI A300 standards, which were created by arborists. Those are incorporated explicitly. It deals with the chemical control methods. You know, although we can't control the types of chemicals, we can say, you know, make sure that on a windy day, you aren't spraying those chemicals, where they could blow back on other areas, things like that. And then, provisions related to supervision and oversight of contractors, identification of the contractors and employees, and then cleanup of the vegetation that's removed. So, as I said, while this was going on, the tree ordinance was also working its way through the Tree Board. They spent quite a bit of time developing that. I think Don Menzies is here tonight as Chair of the Tree Board. They intended, they were trying to protect street trees, things that the city can't control. It was not intended to regulate utility companies because of all of the issues I just spoke about. So, cities are empowered by state law to enact ordinances for the purposes of regulating, planting, and maintaining trees in the streets, avenues, or on municipal grounds. That's an explicit grant of power in Title 11. So, the ordinance sought to protect trees in the street right-of-way from unnecessary removal by requiring permission from the forester. The process to alter a tree in the right-of-way is to request permission from the forester. Forester comes out, looks at the tree, and grants permission, if it's needed, to eliminate damage to buildings, foundations, utilities, pavement, or for some other good reason like the health of the tree. And then, if the homeowner desires to remove the tree without the forester's permission, they can be subject to an administrative fine based on the size of the tree, which can be remediated with replacement trees. Recently, we've had 11 homeowners request 17 trees be removed on Berry Road, and that's what's brought this to the forefront again. So, as I said, permission's granted where the trees aren't healthy. In these cases, our foresters talked about how there was excessive topping, which deteriorates the health of the tree, decay columns, dropping branches and/or no branches. At the last meeting, he provided some pictures of these types of issues. I know for me, it was personally educational. Massive seed production. And because these are trees in the street right-of-way, these, there are possible liability issues for the city if trees that are at risk are in the right-of-way and aren't removed. So, that's something else to consider. The fines in this case, five trees that forester assessed did not need to be removed right-of-way, and so that subjected them to a $5,700 fine under the ordinance. and so that subjected them to a $5,700 fine under the ordinance. So, some of the questions we got the last time we talked about this was, could the electric line be buried instead? We've talked with O E C specifically about Berry Road and the cost. It's about $750,000 to $1 million to bury a line in a developed area per mile. Our code requires in new areas that all the lines are undergrounded, but it is very difficult and very expensive to go back and do that in a developed area. And in fact, we saw pretty high costs during the Lindsey Street project as well, when we undergrounded those lines from O G and E. There could be risk to existing trees, so that's something to consider. You know, contact with the drill tooling could damage tree roots of already struggling trees, bore pits, the pedestal construction. We have to get temporary construction easements and get equipment in there. All those things can add additional stressors to existing trees. And then again, it's the liability issue, really, for me, is if there are known unhealthy or dangerous trees, should the city allow them to stay or require them to stay in a case where, say, like tomorrow, we could have an ice storm and trees could come down? So, that's something else for the council to consider. I'm going to ask Tim to come up and talk about this tree replacement program he's been working on.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and everybody that's here. Apparently, trees aren't as important as...
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Okay, yes, they are. For any kind of hazardous tree removal that I cause to happen, I always try to replant a tree. We've done this all over town, and, well, not all over town, but in some select locations so far. It works pretty good. For Berry Road, what I call Phase One is from Emhoff North to where there are existing sweet gums. I call that Phase One, and the replanting program for that is every spot that's available that can hold a tree, I'm going to put one, as long as a homeowner wants one, in conjunction with some financial help from O E C. Then, Phase Two is what I would call, if there's any trees removed from that point on, which is the, you know, the existing sweet gums, there's $5,700 roughly in fines that will be used to plant trees in those spots if they come open. Plus, my budget will help augment that to plant more trees. Yes, ma'am?
There you go. Just trying to get you to the next slide.
I'm waiting on one thing to start Phase One, and that's a simple graphic that I looked at proofs today and making some changes. Probably by next week, it'll be done, printed, and I can put all these things on these people's doors, so that they can pick what tree they want, if they want a tree, or multiple trees if they have space. Even, some of the trees, some of these spots don't have room for trees in the tree lawn, so I've chosen some other ones that would look good in the front yard, push them up closer to the house or the fence. Any questions?
Councilmember Holman.
So, are all the trees that are proposed to be removed, are they under power lines? Or some of them just have disease or whatever? But they're all under a power line?
They're all under the power lines.
Okay. And talking about area between the right-of-way sidewalk and the street, so would we be able to say, well, the space between the sidewalk and the street, we want that to be tree-lined? That's the right-of-way?
Yes, but...
Not necessarily if the homeowner really just really didn't want it, that we would force it, but...
In my experience, if you don't get their buy-in, you know, I can't water every one of those by hand. I've made that offer to people who can't water. You know, I said I'd drag a hose out there for them, you know, for elderly or someone who just can't do it, but I need their buy-in, so, you know, I want them to want the tree to be there. But I don't know if the ordinance will let me just force a tree in between the sidewalk and the curb if the person who lives in front of it doesn't want that. I'm not sure what right I have to do that.
Thinking about a lot of the tree-lined streets in core Norman, a lot of those trees are in the right-of-way, and some of them now are very large. You know, I don't know if they all started off with the resident going out and taking care of it, or if they were planted and they grew that. I'm not sure. But I know we've heard comments about, you know, we're going to lose the canopy, and we can't really get that back with the type of trees that we're going to have to plant, and part because they overhead power lines, we can't plant the type of trees we might want to put there to make, that would be big enough to restore that canopy someday. Are there, in other areas where there's not a power line above, is there a different standard of tree that you have discretion over? Would we be able to direct some sort of, where we say, when there's not a power line overhead, and we're planting a tree, we want it to be the biggest one possible? Like, we want a redwood in there, you know, that type of thing? Because, you know, I understand some of those trees, they're small now, and I do appreciate the trees that are on Boyd Street as you get close to 12th Avenue, but they aren't as big as I would like. You know, I would want to see that canopy someday in 30 years from now. And so, in areas where there's not power lines above, I'm not sure what the range of different types of trees, or what all the different types of trees we have in core area that are so large now, that have, you know, planted 100 years ago or whatever. But I just, what I guess I'm trying to say is, I understand we have to go with a certain type of tree when it's underneath the power line, but anywhere there's a spot, there's not a power line above, I would personally prefer that we go with the biggest tree we can possibly get in there and...
I generally do. That was an Asian species kind of demonstration that I did years ago, just to see how they would do here. I wished I would have picked something a lot larger, because they'd be big now.
Well, and it'd be nice to maybe find some different areas where we could have a planned canopy, like, you know, it won't be that immediately, but in 20, 30 years, we have done a street, a neighborhood street in core Norman, where in 20 or 30 years, that tree canopy will be there, based on our actions today. So, I appreciate all your work on this. I know it is frustrating. I would prefer, for a lot of folks, when we have to cut trees down, and, you know, it takes decades to get them back, and it is very expensive to bury utilities, and I think that's why it's always a good opportunity for us when we have these big road bond projects that we put in front of voters, that we always make sure to include that cost in those big projects. Those are widely, have widely been supported by our voters, most recently in April, and so when we have the opportunity to do these big road construction projects, redoing the entire thing. I know Lindsey Street was expensive, and it took a lot of effort, but the street looks so much better now without all the power lines hanging over it. We don't have to worry about a storm coming in and knocking the power lines over onto the street and closing the street down for, you know, days and stuff like that. And it allows us to plant bigger trees, which I think, even with Lindsey Street, the whole conceptual idea of why we settled on that design was the whole idea of the tree canopy in 20, 30 years, that Lindsey Street would just have the trees covering the whole thing from 24th all the way to Berry, actually, all the way to campus, but... So, I appreciate all the work, and I hope we'll continue having these discussions and planning for where we can do buried utility lines where possible, and get the big trees in there. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other question? I'm sorry, questions or comments? Councilman Bierman.
So, all I want to say is, I've been a little talked out for the last few days, and I'm pretty tapped out tonight, but I feel like I might have some thoughts or some questions. I just don't know that I'm going to be able to put them together into questions right now, so keep an eye out. I'll be sending you an email, probably with some thoughts after I've had a couple drinks and a little sleep.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Well, first of all, I don't want the lack of people here to be a reflection of what you really think the community feels about trees, as a, I guess, quasi-appointed leader of the tree people at the moment.
I'm making you a shirt.
Yeah. I've asked, and they're very, very passionate people, and I have no doubt that the other night, when we had our meeting in the room here, we could have packed it with tree people. I have no doubt we could have practiced it tonight. It was, it's not hard to motivate the tree people. But I've asked them to just let the process run, so I guess my first question is, I've been told that we were going to be formally notified if O E C intended to move forward with the removal of these trees. Do we know where they are in that process?
I do not know if there's been a decision made to remove any trees.
Well, if you do hear about that, I would ask the courtesy of that, and I really appreciate your hard work. I know you've been working hard. The Ward Four meeting that Lee had the other night was fantastic. I took notes on what your recommendations were, very thoughtful and insightful, so I just look forward to continued dialogue about this. I think, I don't think, I've not heard anyone say that street trees take away from the value of homes in a neighborhood. If anything, I've not even heard anyone say they're a negative. I've heard no one say, everyone say that they're a positive to the, you know, so there's an economic reason that we want to have street trees, and that look, you know, in a neighborhood for people that are in the area. And so, that would be, you know, as I've talked to some homeowners that are really passionate about one in particular that wants to remove some of those trees for their own personal reasons, you have to weigh the benefits or the detriments to the community for this one individual, and it's which is the whole point of zoning and, you know, community management of areas, you know? Why we do certain things affect the greater body of people, you know? And that's why I can't raise pigs in my backyard. I can't have a rooster right now, even though I love roosters, you know, because they make too much noise for my neighbors, you know? So, there's reasons that we do this for the good of the neighborhood, which is for the good of the city, that supersedes maybe this individual person's say in what happens on their property, and that's the whole thing about zoning. So, thank you again for your hard work and your efforts, and it's been a long day today and night. I know everyone here is tired, so we'll keep this discussion going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Hall.
First of all, I'd like to volunteer to be part of the tree people. I also wanted to thank you, Mr. Vermillion, for taking the time after work to attend the Ward Four meeting. We had a really good turnout, and the thing I appreciated the most about your presentation was just how you're going about your job as you take on this new position, and your willingness to be so responsive to the people who attended, because in Ward Four, obviously, the tree canopy is something that we really value, and, but also recognize that not every old tree is a healthy tree, and, you know, that becomes the challenge. But you were able to really address a lot of different questions, and the differences between private property and right-of-way, and all of your ideas about the types of trees that we should be thinking about to continue to invest in our tree canopy over the years when we do have to make the tough decision to take a diseased or unhealthy tree down. So, I just wanted to thank you again publicly for taking the time, and I know it is an issue that a lot of our residents are very, very interested in and passionate about, and so I feel really grateful that we're able to have this position and to have you here with us to help us move forward, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the job.
Thank you, Councilmember. I also want to take, I am sorry, take an opportunity to thank the Tree Board, a wonderful board that I happened to start my city service on. Did you know that, Councilmember Carter? Tree Board alumni, right here. And I'm from Kansas, which is a prairie, so that was quite a learning experience for me. But they work really, really hard. We're so lucky to have a forester with your experience and knowledge to guide us through this, so thank you for all your work. I've heard so many great comments about not only the work you do, but the fact that you exist, so thank you. And again, thank you to our residents and all of our citizens that serve on our boards and committees, including the Tree Board. So, seeing no other council comment or questions, throw it out there to, like, the three people who are here. Any public comment on this? I would love to hear from you, sir.
Don Menzies, 4202 Briarcrest. I'm President of the Tree Board, and we helped write the ordinance, and Tim has got some good varieties that could go back in those places. He's got one, it's called a wireless zelkova. It's only 25 feet tall, but it's 36 feet wide, so it would go out over the street and stay under the wires. I've never actually seen the tree in real life, so it's, that's going to add to genetic diversity in Norman. And so, there are some exciting things to do. Trees that, when they are trimmed, if they don't remove them, they will be trimming them back. And a lot of the value that you get from trees are the leaves and the stormwater and the shade, and all that's going to be gone when they're, you know, when they're trimmed back again. So, having a healthy tree under those wires and a vital, I mean, a tree with a lot of vitality is really a good thing. We're kind of having to clean a mess that was made in the past. And so, on something, another thing, this is completely off-subject, but getting an app for the city is really, that's the way to go.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Councilmember Carter.
Just had one other thing I just wanted to bring up. I just got an email today, and I'm going to forward it to the city manager, but about the work on McGee Street, we're going to start putting in some sidewalks, and there's a homeowner there that I think feels like some mature, large street trees are to be removed to make room for the sidewalks. And I said, well, we want sidewalks, and we want big trees, so let me find out about it and bring you guys in on the circle. I'm sure there's something we can...
Yes, sir. I have been called by her, Ms. Lee, is that it, I believe? Mrs. Lee, her landscape architect, who's I've known for years.
Lee, yes.
Yes. He showed it to me, and she's got some moguls, some really cool berms, and they're kind of, I'm sorry, they're kind of encroaching a little on the right-of-way, I believe, and so to put a sidewalk in that is within our right-of-way, it's going to take a little bit of her berms, so you have a proper slope, and there's going to have to be retaining walls there as well. She's got a couple of cedars and an old American elm. Those are the only thing I could see that would be affected. But that's what I know about it, sir.
Okay. Well, I'll forward that email, and you guys, yeah, if you can just maybe send me something back, and we can...
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Sir.
Excellent. So, for Tori.
I just want to say one thing.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Tori Tetter-Loughlin at Ward Four. I'm no longer in two.
Okay.
Yeah, moved. I just wanted to second what Menzies says and tell you guys how excited the Tree Board was when Tim showed us some of the varieties that were possible, and I want to say it's zelkova, wireless zelkova. If you want to look it up, there are beautiful pictures online of it underlines and causing this gorgeous canopy. It's pink-red in the fall, and a medium-green in the summer, and it would be a real nice canopy, a nice canopy. And he said it was medium-growing, I think. Anyway, he's doing, he's doing some research. There's a lot of options out there for us, and so it's really nice to have that kind of expert on our team now. Thanks.
And again, thank you for your service on the Tree Board. My final comment would be a reminder, thanks to the Mr. Menzies shirt, about Earth Day. It's the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and we will be, of course, rolling out in our city of festivals, so stay tuned for that. The month of April should be very, very exciting, so stay tuned and mark your calendars, and sign up for Norman News, which we had discussed earlier tonight to help keep you in the know. Again, thank you to everyone who came out tonight. While we don't always do public comment during study sessions, this was a great time to hear public comment with the first time that we were hearing these recommendations, and so continue to come back. I know it's easy to get all fired up about one issue, and that's the only time you engage in the most important level of government, but we make decisions every Tuesday, second and fourth Tuesday are voting meetings, that impact your everyday life, and we are doing good work in the city, so I encourage you to... So, I encourage you to learn more about that and join us. So, thank you so much.